All right. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of December 10, 2024. The proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcast by Area 58 TV. If we could, smooth the plug.
... United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is for the public hearing continued from Wenham PVI LLC requesting a site plan review pursuant to Section 3100 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 27 Wenham Road in Carver, Mass., Sessors Map 100, Lot 6, in a residential agricultural zoning district. Daplin is proposing to construct a smart dual-use agrivoltaic LSGM SPI on a plot of land currently utilized for cranberry farming.
Kyle, do you want laptops to turn that on?
Yeah, laptop would be good as well. Thank you. Oh, perfect. You got me? Oh, perfect. Okay. Thank you. submitted on Friday. Yeah, those are the ones that were posted on the website. Okay, sorry. Sorry. I'm just gonna go ahead. Apologies for the delay, but I guess I've got our updated, we updated our site plan just slightly from the last meeting because we responded to the feedback that we got from the engineer, Andrew Gleins. We're able to just update our site plan just pursuant to the feedback that we got from him, just to address his comments. And I guess the two, the twos, there really haven't been any major changes to the site plan. The only things that have changed is we added a small area of vegetated screening on the north edge of the parking area at the request of our butter to the north on Wenham Road just to protect, just to screen any glare from headlights, from vehicles parking or turning around in that area. And we also finalized our fencing plan. The fence around the array area is gonna go around the exterior of the access road. This is at the recommendation of the cranberry growers that we're working with. They advised that it would be best for their, for their crew if we were to have the fence around the exterior of the access road. And we also have three 12-foot wide vehicle gates plotted on the access road just below the transformer pad, by the watering hole, and also at the south end of the bog where there's an access road that goes from our property onto, to the south, onto 80 Makepeace property. We also included a gate there on the south just in case any vehicles need to use that existing access road. We'll be able to open up that gate for them. And each gate is gonna have a super key safe with the key for the access, so the fire department or anybody else can get access. And there's gonna be a sign posted above all the key safes. It just says Fire Department Key Box. And the signs, the proposed signs that we have for this installation are on a sheet, C 5.1. Sorry, this is still not the latest. So you can see those, the signs that we proposed. Sorry, this is, sorry, this is still not.
So you're gonna have to go with your presentation.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So just stick with that. I'm sorry, these are not the, on the computer is not the latest site plans that were delivered to you on Friday. So I apologize for that. But, yeah, so those are the two major updates to the site plans is just the vegetative screening and the fence around the array area. And then Andrew Gleins also had comments on the stormwater management memorandum, and the Conservation Commission also had comments on that. VHB hasn't been able to complete updates on that, but we will share that with you and with Andrew Gleins once, once their updates are complete. And, you know, Andrew will be able to review all the updates we made and let us know if he has any further comments. Other documents that are updated, you know, in response to Andrew Gleins' feedback was the decommissioning plan. We got a itemized decommissioning cost estimate from our engineer, Devin Howe. We also, you know, in this cost estimate, we added a line item for cranberry bog restoration to account for any damage to the cranberry vines that might occur as the solar ray is being removed. And this represents a significant increase in our decommissioning cost estimate compared to what was previously presented, just based on the feedback that we received. And there are also just some minor updates to the, to the operation and maintenance plan. We just included some language about the operation and maintenance of the stormwater management infrastructure. And additional information on that will also be provided in the updated stormwater management memorandum that will get to you all very, very shortly. We also added a sentence to item seven from the operation and maintenance plan that the contractor will sweep, sweep Wenham Road just to remove any tractor-on sediment. In addition to, our contractor will utilize, you know, a wash pad as well for the vehicles prior to leaving the site. And we also created a ground fuel maintenance plan for the fire department. We also addressed all the fire department's feedback that we got from them, and we had a, a turning apparatus diagram. It's basically the, the purpose of the turning apparatus diagram is to verify that all the turns throughout the access road on the property, there's enough space for the fire departments to safely turn, turn their large, their large trucks. So all this information has been shared, shared with the fire department, and hopefully they're satisfied with, with the work we've done, and they approve of, of the plans we've, we've put in front of them. So hope, hope to be able to provide you with the fire department approval shortly. We also had VHB look into, at the last meeting, a question regarding snow removal and management was raised, and we had, you know, our environmental specialists with VHB just, just look into this, and also had a brief conversation with the Conservation Commission. And there's, you know, our, our plan is just to push the road to, the snow to the side of the access road. There's no, we don't believe there's any issues with this environmentally or just with regards to the wetlands and resource areas. And as far as, you know, traction is concerned, we're intent on fully on just using sand for that. And I guess the final item that we had submitted was a memo from our attorney, David Burson, in response to Town Council Questle's memo just regarding the ongoing conversation regarding whether or not, you know, this, this project qualifies for the agricultural land use protections in 40A, Section 3. We understand that Questle, Questle's view is that this project does not qualify for those agricultural protections, which is just, unfortunately, is just contrary to our, our understanding of the law. And David Burson just drafted this memo for, for the board and for Attorney Questle just to kind of reiterate our, you know, what our, our belief is. We do believe that it's, it's quite clear that, you know, this, this type of project, the smart dual-use agrivoltaic projects, does, does qualify as agricultural use under 61A, Section 2A, Part D, and which affords this type of project, you know, agricultural land use protections under MGL 40A, Section 3, which does specify that, you know, agricultural uses are exempted from, from special permits and, I guess, unreasonable or excessive regulations, which, you know, is, is why we're, we're insisting that, you know, this project shouldn't, shouldn't be required to obtain a special, special use permit from the planning board, and also there should be no issue with the, the frontage being less than required because this, this is a pre-existing non-conforming agricultural use.
So our bylaws require that this has a special use permit, right?
They do, yes.
Then you'll have to take that up with the Attorney General, I think, because they're approved by the Attorney General and the state's office. So it looks to me like this requires a special permit. And while you may have a valid point, it's not, it's not relevant to this situation.
Yeah.
I see you've add seven-foot-tall chain-link fence all the way down to the main roadway through the protected areas?
I, I just, no, the fence, it's, it doesn't, the fence, the, the access road is not gonna be fenced. There's not gonna be a fence on either side of the access road. It's just gonna be around the bog area.
What am I looking at then with these dark lines? I'm having trouble differentiating between where the fence is and what the dark lines on either side of the road are supposed to represent.
Yeah, no, I understand that there's a, there's definitely a lot going on in there. I mean, we can, we can work to, to do a better job of clarifying what, what those lines are and removing anything that is potentially redundant. But I guess just our, our plan is for, regarding the fences, for it to just circle the bog area and, and the access road around the bog and not to be on either side of the access road between the bog and Wenham Road.
Okay, because it's noted here on, on the map that chain-link fence gate with key and a super key safe installed on gate at the Wenham Road intersection. And I'm, I'm gonna also have to raise more concerns in regards with snow removal and dumping in, within the protected areas and zones of the wetlands. And I expect we'll hear from the CONCOM at some point, or have they reached a decision? Has there been an order of conditions set?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be at the Conservation Commission meeting on Wednesday next week. You know, my expectation is that we'll have an order of condition after that meeting. I frankly, I can't say if that order of condition is going to mention snow removal.
Right, because we shouldn't.
At all, because we, I mean, I had an informal conversation with a member of the Conservation Commission, and they stated that they're not aware of any rules or regulation regarding snow removal and resource areas such as this.
Snow removal's okay, but dumping into the 65-foot, 100, and the 200-foot protected riverfront areas is certainly gonna be concerning to some degree with the amount of chemicals and salts and such associated with this. And we would want to prevent any of that as you're doing a new development from the roadway access infiltrating into the site or running off into the site into the wetlands in regards to that.
Right, I guess we, we intend on using sand for, for traction when necessary. So in terms of, in terms of chemicals, I don't think that's, I guess, like an accurate.
Well, I'm talking about the runoff and the carryover from the main road and accessing the site. And is the sand, how much sand are you planning on using? Is it gonna be removed at the end of the season? Is it gonna change the road or the drainage capacities of such?
So I guess our, our, the snow removal memo does, it does say that, you know, any sand or debris, you know, deposited, you know, over the course of the winter will be removed at the end of the snow season, no later than May 15. And, I mean, regarding any, I don't, I guess, runoff from, from Wenham Road, I don't foresee this project changing any impacts from, from Wenham Road. We're not changing Wenham Road at all, so.
No, but you're widening the roadway, which is already very constricted between two properties in regards to this, this plan. I mean, you don't even have sufficient room to make a roadway to the site if it was left to your property. I understand you've gotten something from the neighbors that grants you access in regards to that. Was it?
We have.
And that was included in our packets.
That's correct.
Yes. I also noticed that you haven't fully answered all of Mr. Gleins' questions in regards to his review.
That's correct. We, VHB hasn't been able to complete updating the stormwater management memorandum yet. They're working on it now, and I will get that to you all as, as soon as we have it. And those were the only questions from Andrew Gleins that we weren't able to respond to ahead of this meeting, was just with the, the comments regarding this stormwater management memorandum.
I look forward to hearing back from Ms. Questle's response in regards to your lawyer's letter. I haven't had a chance to peruse it as it was not available Friday at 10:00 PM, so it's something that I haven't had a chance to, to look over, but I'll certainly take it into consideration. But clearly, the 150-foot frontage and then the pinch points regard, regarding this are certainly concerning.
Do I have any other concerns to be heard on the board?
One, one question. With regards to the fence, the gate coming in, how far back is that set off the street?
From, from Wenham Road, the, that first access gate, I mean, we haven't specified precisely how far setback it would be. Does the board have, I guess, have, does the board have a preference on that setback?
Well, I would think it would be, a healthy setback would be at least the length of a fire truck.
Okay, that, that makes sense. Yeah, understood.
Which again is gonna involve more work within the protected areas too. So it's, this isn't, you know, I, I'll, I'll look forward to the Conservation Department, Conservation Commission's assessment of the situation and their order of conditions, but, but certainly there, there are enough red flags that they should, that they will be given it a fair amount of scrutiny.
Yeah, no, that's correct. And, I mean, we have been working with them as well throughout this process, and, you know, we're looking forward to being able to provide you with their order of conditions.
Because whatever happens in this area is not gonna just affect your property, and that's part of what we have to take into consideration. It's gonna affect both the butters on either side in regards to all this work and all the potential impacts in regards.
No, I mean, that's, I mean, that's correct. I mean, we've, we've been working with and communicating with both his butters as well, I mean, throughout this process, you know, incorporating their feedback as much as we can, which, you know, I believe we've been able to do to, to a significant extent.
Mr. Planner, do you have anything to add to this?
No, other than we have forwarded Attorney Burson's comments to Town Council. They're in Town Council's inbox, and I expect we'll hear from them, back, back from them, but I don't have a timeframe for when that might be. I usually send something to Town Council, then wait a few days and give them a poke. So this came in Friday, so you saw it Monday.
Okay. All right. And if there's no other concerns at, at this time on the board, then I'll open this up to the public.
Oh, okay, that's good. There's just one other document, I guess, that we submitted is because we gave a 30-day extension to the site plan review process at the last meeting, and we did submit another 45-day extension because I know that 30-day extension is running out in just a couple of days. So that 45-day extension would extend this to January 26, 2025.
Right, but as a special permit, which is what we're standing on currently.
Yeah.
We have a far more extensive timeline.
That's correct, yeah.
All right then. Hearing no other concerns from the board at this time, open it up. Anybody in the public?
I just have a quick comment.
Could you come up to the, could you come up and introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Rebecca Lipton, and I know it must be difficult to navigate.
Can we get your address too?
Oh, it's 30 Prospect Road. I'm in Plimpton.
Okay.
I know this must be difficult to navigate, what's happening with all this stuff going on, with all these solar panels and wetlands and everything. But one, one thing a lot of these towns are doing when they're doing these big arrays of solar near wetlands is putting up habitat and trees in the bottom of these fences, especially with our two species of turtle around here that are threatened, the Plymouth Red-bellied Cooter and the, our eastern turtle. So I think it would be really important to think about that when permitting these projects because we're losing so much habitat. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just in response to that, actually, that comment, our site plan, the site plan set that we submitted on Friday, it does include a six-foot gap, a six-inch gap at the bottom of the fence for wildlife crossings. This is actually a recommendation from the Conservation Commission that we got at the last meeting. So, yeah, so we, we are aware of that, and I guess we, we've included that six-inch gap at the bottom of the fence. And in the site plan set that you all have, it's the fence detail on sheet, C, C 5.1 is where you can, you can see that.
Okay, thank you. No other concerns from the public? All right then. I think what we'll do is continue this. Now, I really don't want to continue this to 17th because we're just making that.
Correct. I, I suspect that with the amount of time that we're talking about to review things that, Hudson O'Neill's questions, as well as hearing back from Town Council, we're likely looking at the first of the year. So January 14th is the first Planning Board meeting scheduled for 2025.
All right, then I'd like to have a motion to continue that to January 14th.
I will make a motion to continue the public hearing on Wenham PVI LLC site plan review for 27 Wenham Road to January 14, 2025, 7:00 PM, Carver Town Hall, 11:00.
Ms. Gasky?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary Lynn Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Our second order of business is for Ellis Carver Realty LLC requesting a special permit and a site plan review pursuant to Section 2330, 3100, 4341, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaws located at 62 Main Street in Carver, Mass., Sessors Map 71, Lot 9-1, in the general business zoning district for the construction of two craftsmen-trademen building, one at 7,475 square feet and one at 5,200 square feet with required access, parking, and related utilities. Do we have anybody to speak of that this time?
In the public?
No, no. Did they contact you today?
I have not heard from them. I've, I've gotten a few emails from Mr. Borden over the last week or so, but nothing about tonight's.
All right then.
We're still waiting for their response from Hudson O'Neill, and if, Mr. Borden, it should be noted that the fire department is unaware that there will be second floors in these buildings, as they note that interior floor plans do not indicate a second-floor mezzanine.
Well, they did make a, they did note that in the event that they would have, they would have to take a look at the fire suppression system, sprinkler system. The fire department mentioned that.
Yeah, but I, I know in our plans that I saw that they're planning on putting in a second floor, but I don't know if the fire.
You don't know if the fire department has that?
I don't know if the fire department missed it, because they say interior floor plans do not indicate a second-floor mezzanine.
Okay.
And it should be noted that if a mezzanine or second floor within the structure were added now or in the future, this could trigger the requirement for sprinkler protection.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah, it was, it was noted in our last meeting because it did, with the second floors, it far exceeded the, the requirements for.
For a sprinkler system, right. All right.
So should we? So I would recommend continuing that till our January meeting, I mean, our, excuse me, our December 17th meeting.
Okay.
Since I got the information. If they're not ready, then we'll just continue it again.
Okay.
But I hate the fact that we don't know what happened, why they're not here. I'd just hate to push them off a month.
Yeah, no, I understand. All right. Well then.
If I may, we should still open it up for public because they took the time to show up whether the applicants.
Whether they do or not. Sure, fair enough. So at this time, I will ask if there's anybody who wants to come forward in public in response to 62 Main Street project.
Karen Lapium. What am I, 67 Main Street? I didn't follow the last meeting, but I did follow one of their first meetings. I didn't realize they were putting a second floor on. My next issue would be that I would hope that, that whenever they do start construction, and this might not be the time to bring it up, I will again in the future, that they really stick to their timeframe of when they're supposed to be operating and, and cutting down trees and doing their work, because I know early on when they were cutting down the trees long ago, I listened to that for a whole Saturday and Sunday, and it was quite annoying. and Sunday, and it was quite annoying. So I will touch base on that again later, I guess, when it's time for them to all be here to hear my concern.
Okay, thank you for coming forward.
In regards to that, it should be noted that work was done leveling and clearing within the protected areas of.
During our sidewalk?
Yeah, during our sidewalk.
Person taking notes will get that right, Mr. Bott.
As long as we're enunciating into the microphones, yes, they will.
Could you repeat that then, Connie, please?
Oh, that, it was noted during the sidewalk that leveling, clearing, and removal of brush and trees was, was noted during the sidewalk.
All right. Before we continue this, anybody else on the board have anything to say? All right, then. I'm going to look for a motion to continue this to December 17th at 7:15.
January 14th, my.
December 17th.
We're going to be missing a couple people on that, on that day. And I suppose we can continue it from that day if they don't want to proceed, so.
Yeah.
You said December 17th?
December 17th, right.
I will make a motion to continue the public hearing on Ellis Carver Realty LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review for, do we have an address on this?
62 Main Street.
62 Main Street in Carver until December 17, 2024, 7:00 PM, Room One, Carver Town Hall. Oh, I'm sorry. Is it Room Four, Mr. Bott?
I think we are in Room Four because it's on off night for us.
Yeah, so Room Four, Carver Town Hall, 7:00 PM.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Kowski?
Aye.
Oh, Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Savillows says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. All right, next public hearing for Route 44 Development LLC requesting an amendment for a previously approved definitive subdivision entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan for Route 44 Development LLC, Route 44 Commerce Park pursuant to the Carver subdivision control by law for property located at Off Green Parkway, formerly known as Montello Street. Amendment for a previously approved definitive subdivision located at Off Green Parkway, formerly known as Montello Street. Assessors map 20 Lots 2, 2-1, and 14, and map 22 Lots 3, 3A, 3B, 3C, 3-1, 4, 5A, 10, 10-1, and 11 in Carver, Mass., showing four proposed non-residential lots in the Green Business Park District.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George McLaughlin. I, along with my partner, Bob Delholm, own Route 44 Development LLC and this property. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. This has been a long haul for us. It's been, we started this process back in 2013, and I thought, and hopefully we're coming to the end, I thought it might be helpful just to go over a little bit of the history. To my right here is Zach Richards, who is our engineer from Boulder Engineering. And my partner, Bob Delholm, back here, and we have a few other advisors. I just wanted to go through quickly a few of these slides. As I say, we acquired the property in 2013, and over that 10-year period, I don't know if any of you remember that site, but the site was an absolute mess when we took it over. It was an old, worked-out sand and gravel pit. It had all kinds of debris all over the place, stump dumps, you know, hazardous waste issues. And we spent a lot of time and a lot of effort straightening that out, developed a PFAS problem. We, a PFAS problem came basically from the town allowing Marlborough to come down there and dump, you know, sludge on the property. We straightened the PFAS problem out, put that in the, in the back corner of the property and capped that. September 2023, we had our, obtained our ORAT. I see Mr. Savory Moore here, and he wears two hats. He was on the Carver Conservation Commission as well as on the Carver Redevelopment Authority. And I see Chairwoman Joanna Layton Beck there, who is the chairperson, as you know, of the Carver Redevelopment Authority, who we've worked with diligently over the years on this project. Obviously, we obtained definitive approval from you folks back in February of this year. We have filed an amendment and a special permit filing, which is what we're here for this evening. Recently, a few weeks ago, we were before the earth removal committee because we have some earth removal committee issues. Next slide. And, you know, as I say, it's been a lengthy process. It started back really with the Carver Redevelopment Authority. And as I think some of you may know, this parcel has long been recognized by the town as a key to the town's future economic development. The reason the Carver Redevelopment Authority got involved is because my partner and I originally owned kind of the whole of the donut. We owned the centerpiece that was about 127 acres, but it was surrounded by a bunch of other parcels. So the question is, how do you assemble that whole parcel, which, you know, today we have done? And the way we would do it, the way we were able to do it is by entering into a partnership with the Carver Redevelopment Authority under the urban renewal plan. Basically, as you know, the way that worked is the Carver Redevelopment Authority, after hearings before the town and hearings for the selectmen and what have you, decided this was a great project for the town to pursue. And after numerous meetings, we were selected as the redeveloper of the property. And we have spent, you know, the majority of the last 10 years acquiring the sites around us. We could have acquired them by eminent domain, but the Carver Redevelopment Authority asked us to only use eminent domain as a last, as a last resort. We didn't have to use it at all. I went around and negotiated with the people and over a 10-year period, acquired the whole site. And, you know, as I say, we've, we've done extensive remediation there. We have removed all kinds of stump dumps, and the site really is in great shape today. Part of, you know, really one of the major reasons we're here today is because that site, if you've been on it, is really a, you know, a challenged site from a topographical standpoint. You have a large hill in the front of the property, and then you have, you know, undulations, you have holes, and you have little hills around the property. So when we, when we did our analysis, our cut-and-fill analysis, you know, there's, there's going to be excess fill in the property. But more importantly than that, we went to the marketplace, you know, we, we had a deal with Hillwood, as you recall, and then the economy tanked, and Hillwood went by the wayside. So Bob and I decided, we've, we've both got a lot of experience developing and investing in real estate. So we decided, look, let's just take it on ourselves and permit this. And so we went to the marketplace. And when we were, we were originally before you for the subdivision plan in February, we thought that we could get away with, with not taking that, that mound down up front. But as I sit here today, we have two users who want to buy lots from us, both local folks. One wants to build a 450,000-square-foot building. The other wants to build about 100,000-square-foot building. We have all of the issues pretty much solved, power, gas, topography. The one dangling issue is the North Carver Water District, but I've been working diligently with Bob Belbin on that. And although there were issues there, I was saying earlier to Tom Bott and to the Redevelopment Authority, my, my kind of personal mantra is, if you can put a man on the moon, you can solve problems like the North Carver Water District. You just got to roll up your sleeves, spend some money, and get it done. So I, I think that's something we can straighten out. But what the marketplace has told us is, everybody wants a pad-ready site. They want the water, they want the power, they want to be able to go out there and look at it, nice, flat site, so that they could, they can build their building and their business there. And so we're returning to you tonight, in large part, seeking your permission to take down that hill to grade. Zach will address the details on that, I guess, the next slide, if you want, Zach. Not, not right now. Let's just blow through these slides and get to the meat of it.
Sure.
Here we are to the meat of it. Quicker than I anticipated. You know, I know you're busy, and you have a lot of things on your plate. But, you know, as I say, that's really, that's really the nub of the meeting tonight. I know we're looking for some special permits and waivers on some other things. But on that note, I'll turn it over to Zach.
Great. Thank you, George. Thank you, members of the board. Again, Zach Richards, senior project manager with Boulder. So we're the, the site civil engineer on the project. And it's good to see you all tonight. Appreciate the time. Just a quick snapshot of the zoning map to, again, reorient everyone with the, where the site's located. It's outlined in blue in the upper left, upper left-hand corner of this snapshot. And you can see I've labeled Plimpton to the north and, and Middleborough to the, to the west. Again, Green Park Business Zone, really zoned for that urban renewal plan and, and a lot of the goals that go with that. This is the aerial that you may be familiar with, that we, we used during a number of our presentations as part of the initial subdivision plan and review process. The orientation of this is flipped a bit from what you see on the, the zoning map, which is north to south. So that's, north is bottom of the page in this view. And we have Route 44 at the top there, top of the screen, Main Street, or also known as Route 58, to the page left, and then Green Parkway, which is formerly known as Montello Street, and had some intersection upgrades recently done in preparation for this project. And that's, that's the roadway that, that serves our, our site and subdivision. Again, Road A and B are the two proposed roadways that are, are being proposed as part of the subdivision plan. And we've got four lots currently shown, as well as two drainage parcels and an open space parcel towards the top of the page where a lot of those former cranberry bogs exist. This is flipping to the reorientation of, of what's currently in front of you, at least in terms of lots. If I flip back really quick, you could see in the rear of the site, on the right of the page, we have a larger Lot 3 here and a Lot 4. We're reorienting that property line and shrinking Lot 3, and, and that's based on some end user needs and demands that we anticipate, that we thought made sense to, to, to take care of that now and, and provide for that lot that's in demand. I thought a color exhibit would help to show some of these changes that we're proposing or updates. So again, the, the lot line that I just mentioned, the previous lot line here is in that, that X line. It's, it's a red zigzag line type there. That's the previous lot line between Lot 3 and 4, and the new lot line is shown here in green. So we've modified that lot line. Some of the, the key piece here, as, as George alluded to, is that we've determined from going to the market and end users that, you know, we really need to take care and address the, the topography constraint at the site. So we are proposing grading across the site, expanding that limit of work. From what's shown in red was what was approved under the original subdivision approval and submission to what we're showing in blue here. So that limit of work is going from about 30 acres to about 110 acres of, of disturbance. And then as part of that, we are looking to export about 480,000 cubic yards of soil. And that's, as George mentioned, we were in front of the Earth Removal Committee last week, scheduled a site visit for the end of the month. And I think that was generally well-received at the initial presentation. As you would expect with this much earthwork, we've been very thoughtful with the drainage patterns, with our grading, to do nice, gentle slopes wherever feasible. Across most of the site, we've got a number of sediment basins that we're proposing to manage runoff, as well as just erosion control on a site of this magnitude that would manage all of that runoff, hold it on site, provide some infiltration, trap the sediment, and then have a controlled overflow that really comes into play just during larger, more extreme storm events. Excuse me. This zoomed-in plan calls attention to some of the other proposed changes that we've incorporated here. Again, you can see the previous limits of disturbance shown in red with the, which included a staging area, and now the updated limits in blue. We're looking to deviate and as such, request relief for a couple of the subdivision rules and regulations as part of this amendment. One of those is to just provide a sidewalk on one side of the roadway, which I've shown, highlighted in blue there. In reality, based on the type of tenants and, and uses we expect here, we, we think it's, it would be unnecessary, in reality, to provide sidewalks on both, both sides of the roadways. And we think that the, the end users and, and the site can be adequately served with, by minimizing impervious area a little further and, and providing for sidewalks on one side of each roadway. A few of the other changes, we incorporated some geotechnical recommendations to refine the pavement section design. It does deviate from the, the rules and regulations of the subdivision rules and regs, but we are confident that that's a suitable and adequate pavement section based on the site conditions, and the Geotech memo supports that. The sidewalk, we are looking to propose as asphalt with all ADA ramps still proposed in concrete. Some of the roadway elevations as part of this have also come down, so we've got a little more gentle, generally 1% sloping roadways, which, again, we feel is better suited for the users and, and some of the potential truck traffic that it will, it will experience, as well as maximizing the opportunity for curb-cut locations and, and flexibility as those end users are identified. And as you can see, you know, grading out generally level pad sites for, for these lots. Lastly, as part of the drainage upgrades or updates, we've eliminated the head walls, which are required as, as part of the subdivision rigs, and replaced those with flared end sections and riprap, which is good engineering standard practice. It's just not directly compliant with the rules and regs. So again, a lot of reasonable updates that are pretty generally, or general, generally accepted engineering practice and, and pretty commonplace, but don't necessarily meet the regulations of, of North Carver, or of Carver, the subdivision regs. So again, just to go through the special permits and relief that we're requesting one by one really quick. To be clear, there's three special permits we're seeking. This first one at the top, it's grading or construction, which will result in final slopes of 15% or greater on over 30,000 square feet. And, and really, it comes down to the size of the site and the magnitude. It doesn't take a lot of slopes above 15%. Three-to-ones, generally good practice slopes. So when you're offgrading, we've got quite a bit of those in some locations, and those are well over the 30,000 square feet, just given the nature of we're working across 110 acres. The second item here is that all slopes exceeding 15% shall either be covered with topsoil to depth of four inches or planted with vegetative cover. We've requested this proactively in the hopes that as we're doing some of this work, we can attract some projects and some end users that may not facilitate, or, or that hopefully we can roll right into construction, and it may not require, you know, full revegetation of those slopes and loaming. So we. So we, we're, we're looking to seek for the, you know, the flexibility to be able to potentially provide for some more temporary measures if we do find a project that's close on the heels of the earthwork being done as part of this project. The last one, again, comes with just the magnitude of the site and the overall size. It's no areas totaling two acres or more, shall have existing vegetation stripped. And obviously, with the size of this magnitude, we're currently proposing to remove vegetation across more than two acres of, of area. Jumping right into the waivers, I won't hit these in too much detail because I've already hit them. The pavement section, we talked about sidewalks on one side of the road. Road A and B elevations are being adjusted and won't provide for the 500-foot vertical curve in the regulations. It's actually going to be a gentler curve, which, again, is, is generally accepted engineering practice, it just doesn't meet the exact regulations. So that's a more flatter, gentler, vertical curve of longer length. We're going to be replacing the head walls with flared ends. We're actually looking to change the curb type from Cape Cod berm or asphalt berm to vertical granite curb. At the curb cuts along Green Parkway and at catch basin locations, we find that those catch basins and the drainage functions better with vertical granite curb at those locations. Changing the sidewalk material generally from concrete to asphalt, except at the ADA ramps. And then there was a waiver regarding the hydraulic grade lines. We had done that in the past, and the drainage actually functions a little bit better with some of these flatter slopes. We don't have the same drops over some of the structures that we had in the previous design, which really eliminated the need to, to model that. I think this, this image is a really good representation of the, the overall earthwork approach that we're taking on the site, and helps expand upon what George had outlined. You can see that hill shown in red in the front of the site, that's where our largest cut is. And areas of cut are generally the yellow, orange, red areas shown on this photo. The areas of green and teal are areas where we're only cutting or filling less than five feet. So you can see, the grading approach across the site is really to prep this site for redevelopment. And in, in accomplishing that, we've, we've generally tried to maintain grades across the site. There are some areas that are challenged, such as the hill at the front, where there will be substantial cut. There are also some areas of fill. On the far-right page, you can see the, the blue and purple areas, that's areas of fill of 5, 10, 15 feet. But generally, we've taken a holistic approach of how do we successfully redevelop this property and try to work with the, the topography that we're given, to try to, to match, generally try to maintain existing grades and drainage patterns across the majority of the site. And again, that does result in a total cut of about 720,000 cubic yards. We're going to be filling about 240,000 cubic yards of that cut on-site, and then the remainder will be a net export off-site of about 480,000 cubic yards. So sediment and erosion control, obviously, very paramount on undertaking unlimited disturbance such as this. The site will be under a NIPD's, which is an EPA permit, NIPD's ENOI, and under the, the CGP, Construction General Permit, will be required to have a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, also known as a SWIP, that will be implemented throughout construction. It'll remain on-site, it's going to be a living document that gives a good starting point and all good practices for the contractors to abide by throughout construction. All personnel, all construction personnel will be trained on all the requirements of the SWIP. Again, that permit will be procured through EPA and be in place throughout the life of the, throughout construction. It's anticipated that that front lot, Lot 2, will be utilized for a lot of the material processing, topsoil stockpiling. It's surrounded by the proposed roadways, so it's got a good, a good buffer from any of the resource areas of which, as you know, are around the perimeter of the site. So we thought that made a lot of sense for that, those operations. Tons of sediment controls, as detailed on the site plan, silt fence and compost socks. We've got the sediment basins that we're implementing. We're going to have extensive, several construction exits, so pads for trucks to run over, large riprap pads to break up and, and remove any sediment from tires, that will likely be supplemented with any street cleaners as, as required. The inspection frequency that goes with the SWIP requires that every seven days or 14 days and within 24 hours of a storm event, thorough inspections be done of all perimeter controls, all erosion sediment controls. So that will be followed to a T, and then corrective actions are required within seven days of the time of any discovery of deficiencies or, or issues that need to be addressed. We're, we're going to look to address those within one or two days, right? It's a big site, and we, we plan to have a very thorough inspection program and respond to any issues that are identified very quickly. Just an example of the, the training log that gets implemented and, and completed as personnel are trained, and, and again, this is the corrective action log if things are identified. So all of that's logged very thoroughly, as well as the inspection forms as, as inspections are done throughout construction.
Apologies.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to point out, folks, is...
George, tell them who you are.
Oh, sorry. George McLaughlin, co-owner of Root 42 Development. The, I'll talk to you about these two buyers that we have for the lots. The reason we've been working with these buyers, and as I say, one wants to build like a 100, 125...
If you could speak into the microphone, please.
Oh, sure. We've been working with a couple of buyers of these lots. One of the buyers wants to build 100 to 125,000 square foot facility. So in working with them, the buyer that wants to build the 100 and 125,000 square foot facility wants to buy Lot 1. The buyer who wants to build the 450,000 square foot facility wants to buy Lot 3. We have also had folks interested in Lot 2, but because of the, the topographic challenges of Lot 2, that's where the hill is, you know, they've, they've told us, you're going to take that hill down, which, which we kind of anticipated, you know, from the beginning. Savory and Joanna will remember this. I see Joanna nodding her head. It was always anticipated in our dealings with the Carver Redevelopment Authority that that hill would be taken down. It's just that, you know, we were thinking maybe we wouldn't have to do it, but now the marketplace has, has come back and told us that, yeah, that, that hill really has to come down. Also, from a, from a timing standpoint...
Hit for the microphone.
Sure. From a timing standpoint, what, what we'd like to do is, we'd like to clear the lot, clear and grub and level the lot from April to December of next year, and we've been discussing this with, you know, potential road contractors. So step one would be to clear and grub and level the lot, obviously with appropriate dust controls and what have you that would work out with you folks and with the Earth Removal Committee. And then from April of 2026 to December of 2026, actually build the road, bring in the power, hopefully, not bring in the water, and, you know, all of the utilities and, and have a finished road by then, because these two buyers aren't going to wait forever to buy these lots. And so we've been going back and forth with them on their timing, when they want to build, when they want to move in. And, you know, as I say, this has been an 11-year kind of a public-private partnership, if you will, between us and the town. And it's really been, it's, it's been a lot of work, it's been educational, but I, I got to tell you, it's really been a pleasure dealing with Carver, you know, with, everybody speaks their mind, we, we get the issues onto the table and we solve the issues. And I think this is going to be a wonderful thing for Carver, because as I say, Carver's been targeting this site for 25, 30 years as an economic engine. I've looked at the top five taxpayers, and if we get this place going the way I think it can be going, I think this will be, you know, you'll get more real estate taxes and excise taxes and other taxes out of this development than you will from your top five taxpayers now. I mean, you know, if you look at it, your top tax payer is Instar, the next taxpayer is South Meadow Village, Shaw's Place, Edoville Railroad, and then there's a substantial solar development. The total of those five assessments is $3,423,000. If you give us the runway to build this place out, I, I just think this can be a wonderful economic engine for the town, and a wonderful employer of the town, and, and still, you know, pay tribute to the rural feel of the town and character, because as you can see, we're, we're leaving vast parcels, cranberry bogs and what have you, untouched, undeveloped. You know, Bob and I have a lot of pride in, in what we own and what we develop, and, you know, as I say, I really, I, I can see this, I think it's going to be a great development, I think it's going to be a wonderful reuse of, of really a kind of a bedraggled vacant parcel into something very positive. So I thank you for your time. Zach, do you have any, we're, I think we hit all the bases, didn't we?
Yeah, I think, one thing I'll just add is that you can see on this exhibit, the PFOS cap is what we're showing in blue there, and we're not proposing any grading or disturbance of that cap as part of this effort. We understand that may be warranted at some point in the future, but we want to know what, we, we want to defer that for a project, an actual project, right? There's been a lot of time and effort that's gone into that remediation and capping effort, and now that that's complete, we're, we're working outside of that boundary as part of what's in front of you today. And then just really quick, I was almost there, and I don't want to take more of your time than needed, but you may remember truck routing and circulation was a part of the, a big part of the discussion early on. I mean, this, this site's very well-located, very proximate to Route 44. This circulation exhibit will continue to, to be what we, we go by as part of the construction activities, and you can see we're, we're very near to that, that on-and-off ramp, which will be utilized for all, all incoming and going traffic as part of the, the construction effort. So with that, thank you all for your time, happy to dive into more detail as, as needed, and welcome any questions.
Mr. Chair, just one thing, a point of order. This fellow is recording the meeting, which is permitted under Massachusetts general law. The statute provides that after notifying the chair of a public meeting, any person may make a video or auto-recording of an open session of a public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through a medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair will inform other attendees of such recordings. So if you're recording, and these are, by the way, recorded on our local access TV, you're obliged to make this determination to the chair prior to recording.
Okay.
If you want to say something, you'll have to come to a microphone, tell people your story.
Yeah, I'm recording, my name's Aaron Keaton. Usually, you would ask at the beginning, so I'm sorry I didn't interrupt you to let you know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to ask if any members of the board have questions at this time?
According to the impact report, you're expecting more than 8,000 passenger cars and more than 1,700 trucks a day on-site, which is an extensive amount to travel. I believe you requested that this be listed as a major road, so why are we getting rid of the sidewalks?
No, that was, that was originally, that's, that's not what we're planning on. We're not planning on anywhere near those number of trips. That was what, that's the most we could have under the MEPA permit. We're not going to have anywhere near those number of trips.
And how do we know? The only numbers we have to go for are currently on the MEPA report, but there's going to be a considerable amount to traffic, and pedestrian safety is going to be involved. Why are we looking to get rid of half the sidewalks on the site?
Well, I think a couple of things. I think, number one, you know, it was part of your decision and your definitive plan, Point 21, and I quote, "The town planner will continue to coordinate with MEPA and state agencies regarding compliance with the final impact report, open print FEIR, closed print dated April 12, 2019." So, you know, we're going to have to comply with MEPA. Right now, for example, we're talking about two, Zach, if you could go back to that slide, we're talking about two buildings on Road A, about 100,000 square feet, 125,000 on Lot 1, and 450,000 square feet on Lot 3. You know, this, this property, as you know, is kind of in the middle of nowhere, if you will, so where are these people going to be walking to on these sidewalks? And so what we were thinking, you know, when you, when you look at your subdivision rules and regulations, your subdivision rules and regulations in large part have been drafted to deal with residential subdivisions and with, you know, small commercial subdivisions. Your, your subdivision rules and regulations really are not drafted from the perspective of a regional warehouse distribution center like this. So, you know, for example, you know, and I'll keep my voice up, usually people tell me to keep my voice down, not to keep it up, but we're...
When people are at home, though, when people are at home, they can't hear you, I need to say.
Okay.
I apologize for the...
Oh, no, that's okay, it's a good point I hadn't thought of, thank you. It's kind of hard to move, though, and talking to the microphone at the same time, so I'll do my best, but what, what I'm getting at is this, 450,000 square, square foot building here, you know, everybody will be parking there. What we anticipated is maybe on a lunch break, someone wants to go for a walk, so they can walk from here to there and back. You know, people working here may want to go for a walk. There is nothing to the south but this open land here, so there's really no reason to have a sidewalk on that side. And as far as Lot 2 is concerned, we have a sidewalk here, and you can walk across the street and go onto the sidewalk there, so...
Could you point out the open space area?
Yeah, it's, it's all, all up in this area.
Right, which is, you're just saying, why would anybody walk to the spaces particularly put aside for open space?
Well, there's no, there's no trains or anything.
There's, there's, it, it still has to meet the open space requirements, but you're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of 600,000 square feet of space. How many employees is that going to be?
Uh, I think...
George, can you go to the microphone?
Sure. I, not, not as many as you would think. My, my memory is that the, the folks who are going to build the 100,000 to 125,000 square foot building have 55 employees in a couple of shifts. The folks who are building the 450,000 square foot facility have about... The folks who are building the 450,000 square foot facility have about 75 employees. So it's not a lot of employees, it's not a lot of traffic, and if you add, you know, 150,000 or 450,000, that's 600,000 square feet, we're permitted for 1,770,000 square feet. You know, I don't know if we'd ever build that much, but I mean, that, that takes a big chunk out of our, our square footage from MIPA. So, I, I mean, I just, I'll let Zach address it, I think it's kind of, this is kind of a classic large industrial park scenario, if you will.
What are the proposed industries?
Uh, I'm not allowed to use their names. I can say one is a, the 450,000 square footer is an agricultural use, and the 100,000 to 125,000 square footer is more of a, kind of a classic industrial use, if you will.
Industrial use, so, so-
Could be warehouse, yeah, just to repeat.
You can say 55 employees, you could say 75 employees, but unless we know what particular usage these are going to be put through, we have no idea. But you're already, what, halfway, and that's only two of the four, or are we making a fifth, fifth lot with the new lot lines?
No, no, we, we have, we can go back, if you go back to the, the lot, we have, no, yeah, we, we have, we have two lots, we have Lot 2 and Lot 4. So whatever we can, you know, whatever we can build on those lots at a future date will, you know, be, be back before the various boards in town on that.
And just to add on again, you know, it's commercial, industrial, warehouse, distribution type uses, we anticipate that, again, we don't know employee numbers, but tend to be generally low employee counts. And what we've looked at here is just preferential pathways. So as George mentioned, right, we have a sidewalk now that goes along the frontage of, and I believe it's Road B, with the cul-de-sac of lots 1, 3, and, and 4, of which, you know, folks would choose to, to walk on their side of the roadway down to Green Parkway. And then if they choose, there, there is a loop still that, that goes around the, the south side of Lot 2 with a couple crosswalks, and crosswalks, of course, at, at the curb cuts. So we thought it was a reasonable approach to not build excess impervious surface sidewalk that ultimately wouldn't get used, in our opinion, to, to lean this up a bit.
All right. I'm, I'm more concerned with the health, safety, and welfare of, of the people and pedestrians, and, and they're not even interconnecting pathways as it, as it's shown on the map.
What's the, what's the issue with the health, safety?
It's pedestrians, there's going to be pedestrians, this is designed for pedestrians, and this is supposed to be a green business park that incorporates pedestrian traffic into it.
Yeah, but I, I just don't understand-
Well, I'm, I'm just telling you that this is, this is why we went through the approval process, we went through MIPA, we went through the final environmental impact report, the urban renewal plan, this is why we went through all of these, this is a major change. Has this been sent to MIPA for discussion, or the DEP?
No, that's, that's not the-
Or the Housing and Urban Development, it's not, you're, you're making major changes.
No, we've, we've-
If I may?
Yeah.
If I may. So trip generation is not something that typically happens-
No, no, excuse me, Mr. Bott-
So we're talking about-
Mr. Bott, I'm sorry, I had the floor. We're talking about the removal of over 400,000 cubic yards of earth when the plan states Phase 1 is supposed to bring in 82,000 cubic yards, so Phase 2 is supposed to bring in, what, close to half, another half a million yards of fill?
What are you reading from, sir?
Well, I read the, the final environmental impact report, I read the urban renewal plan, I read the, the land fill management plan submitted to the DEP in 2017.
No, that's, you're mixing things up, sir.
I'm not mixing things up because Phase 1 is calling, the overall, what it states in the numbers is that over a million yards of fill are, are needed for this site to, to build a plateau for the development.
That's not accurate, that's not accurate.
It's, it is, well, it's in, it's in the report, this is accurate.
You don't understand with your reading, with all due respect.
I don't understand what I'm reading?
Well-
This is the plan, these are, it's on paper for a reason so that we can go back and read it. Now, the net number of fill to be brought in the site is extensive. We've had multiple discussions amongst the board and the developers in regards to any, any removal of earth should be distributed within the site, and that's also noted in, in the documents. Let's see.
And again, just to clarify-
It's anticipated that all cut will be reused onsite.
Understood, and just to take a step back, we are here for feedback tonight, you know, we understand this is presenting it for the first time.
Yes.
We're here for honest, open feedback, and we know-
So I'm going to ask the questions.
Yeah.
Phase 1 Langdon Environmental, they talk about 82,000 cubic yards of fill. Phase 2 from Langdon adds another additional 672,000 cubic yards of fill. If, if we were going to approve soil removal in, in regards to this as such, we would have certainly wanted the contaminated soil removed and the fill used there. But specific discussions as to the cutting and filling were that it would, was to remain onsite, that there is more than enough acreage to create a flat and level site without removing this earth. Plateau for development, that's page 47 of one of the reports, I didn't note which one. And, and you were looking to do a materials processing center onsite, and a materials processing center is what got this site into the urban blight category to begin with. We're taking steps backwards, we're not taking step, steps forward, you're looking at a huge increase in hazardous materials onsite in regards to this.
Mr. Shea, this really isn't helpful.
It's not helpful? I'm asking the questions, I think it's, I think it's very helpful.
What I'm, what I'm getting at, sir, is, with all due respect, we're, we're going to have to deal with this material onsite, okay? We're going to have to process it onsite. You're talking about us going backwards, we're not going backwards, we've made incredible strides forward. You're talking about bringing hazardous waste, you made some statement about bringing hazardous waste onto the site, we're not bringing any hazardous waste.
There's going to be an increase in hazardous-
Sir, if I could finish.
According to your documents-
Can I finish?
Mr. Shea, let him finish.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I will let you finish, but you're prevaricating.
Well, no, with all due respect, I think you're prevaricating, you're mixing and matching reports, and, and you're not portraying it accurately, and it's not helpful. I'm here trying to do a good thing for the town and a good thing for us.
And I'm not, is that what you're saying?
Sir, if I, if, no, I just think that you're, you know, you're picking and choosing from different reports, and it's not giving an accurate-
Those numbers are across multiple reports.
Well, all I can tell you is this, we're not bringing any more hazardous waste onto the property, you just said that, we're not bringing any more hazardous waste.
It's in your, your documents here, that you're, you're, you're going to need, what, 500 gallons storage of diesel fuel and, I don't know the exact number, but there are-
I don't know what you're quoting from, but, but-
Well, I'm quoting from the fire department report there with the 500 gallons, because I don't remember off the top of my head what's in your report for-
Well, I'll, I'll-
In regards to this earth removal.
Well, we have excess material, where before the Earth Removal Committee, we'd like to remove the excess material from the site. This is an expensive road, if you want the project to go forward, then, you know, we need certain relief. If you don't want the project to go forward, then we won't go forward with it. It's, it's your call, sir.
The understanding of the requirements are listed, they're listed in documents and agreements between the town-
And we've looked up to all of those agreements.
-MIPA, DEP, it's, there's multiple, Kevin even signed the mater, shoot, the material fill assessment request from 2017, which also documents these numbers that was filed with the DEP.
We've gotten complete sign-off from the DEP, sir, you can talk to Mr.-
Great, but the numbers are the numbers, now you're changing the numbers, and it's, it's a major change to what has been studied under MIPA, what was said that was going to happen is clearly not going to happen. What is the final rough grade of this that you're proposing?
It's about elevation 90. And again, I understand your stance, but this was a, urban renewal plan was written back in 2016, market conditions changed, they're active, this is what we've evaluated today based on market conditions, again, wanting to move this redevelopment forward, and we're trying to go through the correct process, which is in front of the planning board, in front of the Earth Removal Committee, to see if there's a path forward based on this analysis and this design, so.
And a year ago, you were in front of us, and we did a site walk, and the discussion was that all cut and fill would remain onsite, there's, there's enough room for it, there should be no need for remove it. And, and what's going to happen, you're going to, you're going to sort it, you're going to sell it, is this going to be another mining operation? I'm, I'm curious, because it's, some of, that, these are my concerns.
Well, I, I don't think it should be a concern, because if I wanted to do a mining operation for 480,000 cubic yards, I wouldn't have spent 11 years of my life and, and a lot of time and money for the sake of 480,000 cubic yards, I can tell you that, I got a lot better things to do with my money and my time. What I, what I'm trying to do here is, you know, build development, and I, and I feel like we're down to the short strokes here, if you feel strongly, I, I mean, I guess, I guess, Mr. Shea, what I'd like to hear from you is, and I want to address them, I don't want to have a combative relationship with you, I've had a great relationship with all of the boards in town, the folks from the Carver Redevelopment Authority here tonight, they'll tell you what a, a great relationship we've had with them. If, if you could tell us, you know, what your legitimate concerns are, I'm happy to address them.
I'm telling you that my legitimate concerns are that you're removing an extensive amount of earth from a property that we've been over and over with, that the reports say requires fill, and now all of a sudden it doesn't require fill, and it's, not only does it not require fill, there's over 400,000 cubic yards of excess fill, which should have been caught somewhere in the process, that the fact that this is supposed to create, that the fill that was supposed to be brought in was, was designed to create a plateau development. I'm, I'm looking at your, one of your engineers's notes here, and, and excuse me, because it's not very clear, it says that this is or isn't within the flood zone, it says, "By graphic plotting only, property is located in flood hazard zone X, unshaded," and this whole map is unshaded, I don't see any shading on here. Area is determined to be outside the 2% annual chance of flood plain per reference number 2. So is it, or is it not within the flood plain? Is your final elevation going to be within what was approved by the MIPA documents?
The elevation, you know, MIPA is a different thing, MIPA deals with, you know, various issues-
Traffic damage, yeah.
And, and your traffic counts and things of that nature, but you have number 21 in here, where the town planner is going to coordinate with MIPA and make sure we're in compliance with MIPA. So we'll be in compliance with MIPA.
Then I look forward to seeing the documentation in regards to that.
Well, we, Mr. Bott?
I, I guess as a follow-up, this is consistent in the next step, consistent with the MIPA certificates that have been issued in the review that's been done. This, this isn't different than, any different than what was already, we received approval for, yes, there is a larger limit of disturbance, yes, there is some export, that isn't necessarily governed, that's not governed by the MIPA certificate in their review. And again, the trip generation required to, to manage this export is much less than what the project obviously will ultimately be handling.
And this, and this earth removal project is expected to take a full year?
More, more than that, it will take, we, we talked with the Earth Removal Committee, and they said that it's an average of like 50 trucks, so it would be more over a two to three year period, we're in the process of working that out with them.
A two to three year period to remove 400 plus thousand cubic yards of dirt, and this, and every, this just keeps changing every time, it's never, it's never, it's always , oh, we're just a little bit, you know, different from what was planned, or, or what was put forth to MIPA isn't what we're doing now. I need the air from MIPA, and we've discussed it with MIPA before, major plan changes have to go through MIPA, and I have no doubt that Mr. Bott's going to do his job, but it's our, our position here to do our job, and that's the health, safety, and welfare, and it's also to make sure that what's being proposed is within the agreements that were made in regards to acquiring this property through an urban renewal plan. That's a contract we have with the town, and that's, that's what we have to deal with.
Susan Murphy, who's one of our attorneys, I thought it made sense for her to address you, Mr. Shea.
Mr. Chair, may I-
Please.
Thank you. So my name is Susan Murphy, and I'm an attorney with Dean Torby in Boston, and I was before you for the original subdivision, you may recall. We, we understand Mr. Shea's concerns, they were raised during the initial, there were a lot of discussions, we spoke to the MIPA director at the time, we understand you, Mr. Shea, and Mr. Bott spoke to MIPA at the time. There is the condition in the permit, as, as Mr. Richards said, we're here to take all your feedback. The MIPA does not require that at this subdivision level, as where, as the Route 44 development is figuring out the layout of the site, the layout of the roadway, the grading of the site, neither the MIPA FEIR nor the URP requires going back and starting over or doing major modifications. But we hear the questions, and we want to give you answers that address your questions. So what we're doing, I'm furiously writing down all of your questions, and prior to the next meeting, we will have the responses with respect to that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other members on the board have questions?
Talked about a bunch of other metrics, if these uses go forward-
Alan, can you get the microphone?
Sorry. If, if these uses go forward, you'd say there was some expected constant truck traffic maximums under MIPA, but what, what would be expected based on the 55 employees, the 75 employees, those usages? Obviously, they're commuting to work, but as far as truck traffic?
Yeah, again, we try to stay away from that, because that's, we don't have any projects in front of you today, right? So my intent was only to relay that general, these general uses are anticipated to be lower employee count uses, and, I mean, ultimately, those will be before you as individual projects if they are identified and moved forward.
So, so general uses and general numbers don't apply to trucks, I mean, if it's a, if it's a terrestrial, I mean, if you don't know, that's fine, just say you don't know.
No, I mean, based on the MIPA certificate and the MIPA review, I believe it was around 4,000 trips a day, that was, that was part of that certificate, so we think that, that MIPA certificate and review is kind of the upper threshold that we plan to be under.
Yeah, that was stated earlier, so I'm asking you, if that's the upper threshold, you can't compare two numbers without knowing which direction they're both moving, and so if the upper threshold is here, what do you guys reasonably think the other number's going to be?
We, we don't know yet, we have to wait for an actual project, so-
All right, fair enough.
Yeah. We'll, we'll be able to get back to you, you know, once we sign with these folks on all the details, all those details, but it's going to be way less, it's not going to be anywhere near the 4,000 a day, I mean, it's going to be a fraction of that.
Thank you.
So-
So I know I, I should have told Alan to say her name so our minute taker can hear you, so that was Alan Maynard, this is-
John Gaskin.
Thank you.
You got, you're, so you're saying right now that you're looking at about 90 foot, right, elevation with regards to final?
Yeah, the range of elevation is roughly from 85 to 95 across the site.
Okay, so.
And Green Parkway, for reference, is, you know, from 83-ish up to 91 or so, so that's kind of driving a lot of the site elevations.
So I, I grew-
And Green Parkway for reference is, you know, from 83-ish up to 91 or so. So that's kind of driving a lot of the site elevations.
So I grew up in the mountainous range and stuff built inside of hills and things like that. What's to, instead of 85 to 95, why not 95 to 105? Instead of taking all that soil off of site, maintaining what we had discussed to begin with, keeping the grade, keeping all the fill on site, spread it out all over everything, raise it up just a little bit higher?
Sure. A lot of the end users that we're exploring and that are contemplated in the urban renewal plan are more industrial warehouse distribution. Those come with very large, long buildings that need to be set at a consistent elevation. So if you have a lot of grade change.
Right, so for consistent elevation, and we keep it at 105 or 95 instead of 90, isn't that still consistent? I mean, if you're saying from 85 to 95, isn't it still consistent if you go 95 to 105? Same grade, except for one little section of it to get in. I mean, I'm pretty sure truck drivers are talented enough to go up a grade, to get into whatever driveway they need to.
Sure.
And road builders are pretty good at building over hills because we have a lot of hills in the area.
I think maybe at our next meeting, we could share some plans that show this a little bit better and without going down too much of a technical grading path. Green Parkway is a fixed elevation, right? And we're down around 83, call it 85 to 90. We're trying to maximize our ability to be able to have curb cuts within reasonable distance and minimize retaining walls by, again.
We just had a residential subdivision that we approved that had like five, what was it, a 5% grade coming off the street going up?
How many, how many house lots in that residential subdivision?
What difference does it make? It's people driving, it's people driving up, they're driving up a hill.
Well, it's because it's.
You're driving up a hill.
We're talking about 1,770,000 square feet of building here. We're not talking about five houses.
That's sitting on top of dirt either way, right?
Well, no.
Either way, it's, either way, it's sitting on top of dirt. It's sand underneath all that. Because it's, because it's part of, because it's part of the aquifer.
That you don't use?
That's not true. That is not true at all.
Ms., please.
That's not true at all. Whether we, whether, whether there's wells attached to it or not, the water is still water around the area.
Yeah, I understand.
But the thing of, what I'm getting at is, what difference does it make if you build it 10 feet higher? If you move, you're gonna, you want to cut everything off because you want to make some extra money. I get it. But we talked about this at the last time when we did the special permit for the subdivision, that all the dirt was gonna stay on the site. And that's what we were told, and that's what we agreed to. Now you want to come and change everything because, because you want to.
And again.
Whatever reason you, whatever reason you have, we want to keep it so that the, so that the sand stays, the soil stays. So nice little compromise there would be to raise the elevation a little bit.
The approach that we're showing maximizes the flexibility for the end users is ultimately what it is. And that's, that's basically what we're seeing for the demand in the marketplace.
So, hold on just a second. So the demand in the marketplace is asking for a 90-foot elevation as opposed to 100-foot elevation? Is that what you're telling me?
An elevation that's, that's close and proximate to the roadway for both visibility, presence on the roadway, and to maximize curb cut locations.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Susan Murphy again. I just want to make one clarification because what the board members are saying about the discussion on the original subdivision is accurate, right? The proposed subdivision had, as discussed and as part of the project's history, an attempt, it was an attempt by the applicants to try to minimize land disturbance. And they were hoping by creating the four lots and, you know, trying to do minimal grading, that they could avoid it, right? If, if they were just seeking to take the soil out to make the money or whatever they could do with the 400,000, they would have come to that a year ago and not having to spend a lot of, you know, engineering dollars and your time, et cetera, and come back again. So I just want to state that in connection with that design, it was going to be possible to keep everything on site. And then there was an expectation of, as they determined who the users were and the users came for their lots, then it would be on those users when they came before you to say, hey, we can work with the lot in this configuration, or no, now we're gonna ask you, can we come in and cut all of this out, right? And if that happened by an end user and they didn't need it to take all that soil out, it wouldn't be being conjunction with the whole site that would allow them to balance it to the extent they can. So, you know, I just wanted, just because there is discussion about, well, you told us this and that wasn't true. It was true, there was an attempt to try to minimize cut, maybe leave it to the end users to make it their issue to resolve it. And it became clear that that wasn't gonna work. So I just, I just want to, at least for the record, state that, you know, any kind of, you know, appearance or feeling that you have, that this is some sort of bait and switch is not the case because it's a lot more expensive for them to have gone through this whole process a year ago and now have to go through it again. And if they had planned to do this, they would have done it a year ago. So I appreciate you taking that into account.
I don't think that anybody here thinks this is a bait and switch. I think it's kind of what we agreed to. But I can assure you that we are well aware that 30 feet we're gonna have to take, been taken down off that hill. That shouldn't come as any surprise. It didn't come, shouldn't have come as any surprise eight years ago either, that the lot needs to be leveled. So now all of a sudden, it needs to be leveled and removed and there's a lot of concern in regards to this. The water and the aquifer under that are always, already contaminated from two separate sources. The better the filtration, the less likely the contamination is either to continue or to, to increase. That's our concerns.
Yeah, again, I think we were exploring a lot of end users. I mean, the demand that we're seeing now wants that, that as a flat lot with maximum flexibility for curb cuts and access off of Green Parkway. And, you know, again, to Susan's point, you know, this really wants to be done as a cohesive project. If it was broken up as a lot-by-lot end-user responsibility to do that, you, we'd actually end up with more export, I would think, because we're looking to kind of move the soil around the site within reason, but have an ultimate grading scheme that works for the end users that we're looking to attract as part of this project.
I don't think I have any more questions. I'll look forward to Andy Glynn's comments.
Have you passed this information on to the engineers? Or this is gonna, this is gonna be going forward to them now?
Yeah, all the information, as soon as we get it, within typically 24 hours, we forward that to our consulting engineer.
Okay, because I obviously would like to have Andy here at our next meeting.
At the next continued hearing of this. It's likely won't be in a week.
Right.
Yeah.
Ellen, Mary Ellen, do you have anything? Want to add to this?
So if I may, before you ask for comment from the general public, my point about the sidewalk about a half an hour ago is that the planning board can waive their subdivision regulations if there's some public purpose engaged with it. So it's up to the board whether they want to waive sidewalks or not. They have to have a good reason why they want to waive or have them moved and waived. The second thing about subdivisions is there's typically not trip generation. In fact, there's never trip generation in a subdivision. You're just building a road to create lots. So we see trip generation when we get to the special permits for the sites themselves. Who are those people? What are they gonna be proposing? And that's when we get into, you know, looking at the trip generation under the MIPA review. Third thing is that typically when we see a subdivision plan, the grading we see is just to put in the roadways and what it takes to get the road to this particular grade at 2% or 3% or whatever it is. I don't think I've ever seen a subdivision plan that involved this extensive amount of grading, because you typically just don't see it in a subdivision plan. And I think to Attorney Murphy's point, or whoever made the point, they thought, well, we can just run with it and let the applicant deal with that. So it's good to have that discussion early on about what's going on in the site. But like I said, but typically, we don't see a grading plan like this for a subdivision. You're likely hear that in the comments from Fuss and O'Neal as well. Usually the grading we see is just to put in the roadway versus, what did you say, 103 acres of grading?
About 100 acres.
Yeah. That's pretty unusual. It's great to have it disclosed.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open it up to the public.
So when you come up, please sign the log and introduce yourself, please. Thank you.
I signed it.
Perfect.
Thank you. Jean Winslow, 28, Heather's Path, Plimpton. Few concerns. On his site map, I noticed every, every map that he shows does not show Heather's Path at all. I would appreciate if we could see that, to see the effect. I know that they keep talking about the, how great it is for Carver. I think the one thing Carver has to remember is that you've got neighbors in Plimpton that are on that street and it's a residential area with sidewalks. And just on that alone, I walk down every morning, I take my dog for a walk, I go down Montello to park at, Green Parkway or whatever it is, to the, to the light, turn around, walk back. Sidewalks are imperative. If we're gonna have 4,000 vehicles at the end of that, that doesn't even include, what, two to three years of truck removal? That stymies me. Let's put it, I work from home, first of all. What are the, you know, what are, what are the requirements of that? Is it five days a week, six days a week, seven days a week? When the sand and gravel pit was there, I don't know how many trucks they had, I'm sure it's somewhere in there, but the slamming of the tailgate, you know, when they dump it, when they load it and all that stuff, is, that's frustrating, you know? And we're not opposed, and we've never been opposed, that we've had great neighbors back there. The sewage treatment plant was great, Chiptech, they had their fires and whatnot, you know, there was all that aspect of things. But the scope of these businesses are huge. And on his map, as I stated, Lot 3 is the largest one, 450,000 square foot building. That is colossal. It's, it's, it's a huge building. You know, so noise and light pollution and all of those are really big concerns of ours. And to be honest, when he made the comment about who uses the aquifer, we all have wells. And there is already contamination that's back there. And they capped it, right? So they were planning on putting plastic over. I know a couple of years ago, there was a lot of talk about that. And instead of like, they even talked about removing it. I know one of the meetings, I think it was the Conservation Committee, they talked about, well, why not remove it? Well, that was too much work, so then they're gonna just cap it. And we know how that goes, because I swear, they dumped, I think they dredged the Connecticut River and put it out there too, which is on the back.
Can you, can you just ask your questions?
Okay, well, so who, who uses the aquifer? Is that a concern? Because you're gonna have, you had a, had a really big problem in North Carver with the contaminated water. And if that comes up again, I mean, that, so I think that was really just an ignorant statement to make, who uses it? And then it's a continuous of saying they want to do good for the town, but like I said, what about, what about Plimpton? So as far as sidewalks go, sidewalks need to go all the way down the street on Green Parkway as well, because we do have foot traffic, a lot of it. I know my neighbors and I all walk down that way. I'm a little bit confused that you don't require MIPA approval to modify the already approved plan, because on that, the map, the site map, like I said, which we can't see Heather's Path on that, he had it outlined in red and then all of a sudden it went to blue. So was the original plan on the red outline?
We can have him show that. Would you like, would you care to show her?
So the original approval is on the red outline?
So the original approved limits of work, sorry, Zach Richards with Bowler. Original approved limits of work are shown in the red dashed line, and then the newly proposed limit of work is shown in the blue outline there.
So does anybody see the same thing that I see when you look at that map? The massive difference in space? So if Lot 3 is the 450,000 square foot one, which was in the back section, that one really affects Heather's Path. That's the one that's closest to it. That's a really big concern. And if I'm looking at that map, I don't think I'm colorblind either, seeing the fact that the blue is a lot bigger area than the, than the red. So I actually want to ask the board a question on this. Would you like that in your backyard possibly affecting your drinking water, which already has a problem with contamination back there? Would any of you like this in your backyard? Honest question, please. I take that as a no. I think silence speaks volumes. So then with that field, that hill that's coming down, the wildlife, I mean, I know that that's a refuge for a lot of wildlife. Like I said, I walk that every single day. There's so many deer back there, there's, there's foxes back there, there's turkeys back there, there's just a plethora of wildlife in that. And not to mention that, that's a good buffer for the area, you know, that's back there. As far as, like I said, back to the time of when this, these things are gonna operate, he did state that the 450,000 square foot facility of Lot 3 shows that it's agricultural use. Exactly what does that mean? Is, in my opinion, I all of a sudden see a fertilizer plant going in there or something, and that's a whole nother thing. So I know that that, I'm assuming that that's a whole other, they need to go through all the approval process as well, correct?
Correct.
And the, I take it that these people are gonna probably use the bathroom? And so they're gonna have, they're gonna be using water?
Right now, this, Mr. Bott, if you could, with, this is an explanation of developing the road, not what's going down there in the future, but we're here just for the road.
Okay. So then the traffic then regarding the road? How many trucks was it that they said there was gonna be? Like, it's gonna take two to three years of trucks on that road? So Plimpton also has the road, you know, how are you gonna stop people from going down Plimpton onto that side, which it's a dirt road over there, over there? And we know how well people don't follow signs, because that's just crazy. So there's that issue. And then, well, I think that pretty much covers it. I think, like I said, that I'd like to see, I'd like to see maps in the, in the space difference between where Heather's Path is. And there's houses on Montello as well, right there. I know there's, there's two houses that are on Montello. And then there's all the, we have 14 houses on Heather's Path now. So those are some really important concerns that I know that I have, and I can assure you, my neighbors have the same exact concerns, so.
And I thank you for coming forward to share those with us.
Yeah, thank you.
So we can hear them and they can hear them as well.
All right. Thank you very much.
Hello, Rebecca Lipton, Prospect.
Hello, Rebecca Lipton, Prospect Road, Plimpton. I wanted to talk to you. Mr. McLaughlin claimed that the PFAS problem was taken care of. Well, we all know by North Carver landfill, Ravenbrook and the Middleborough dump, that that is not true. PFAS is a forever chemical and that is why they call it a forever chemical. Taking down that hill would be a crisis situation for any of us who have wells. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is the uses of property. I don't understand why it's such a secret, what is going to be going on there. You have a Butters there who work from home and the noise, like if it was an aggregate company coming in there, that these people have to deal with every single day. So I want to know why that PFAS isn't on these road plans and what happens if they take soil out of that area? And now that's migrating with the hydraulics underneath the ground, the hydroflow. I think hydroflow is really important to study in this area for people who have to drink this water. Does everybody have $7,000 like I do to put in a treatment plant, a water treatment plant in their house? And I think the town of Cape Cod is offering free, not the town of Cape Cod, Cape Cod is offering free PFAS tests to all their residents. Maybe they could monitor all the wells around here before and after and then maybe give some financial support when their wells do become polluted. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Aaron Keaton, Two White Bat Line, Plymouth, Mass. So there's many operations, earth removal operations currently going on in Carver, so traffic is a huge concern. And with up to 50 truckloads a day, this is going to be significantly adding to that traffic concern and safety in Carver. So will the planning board or the applicant be required to do a traffic study? And when would that be done? Would that be done before these permits are permitted?
We'll take that into consideration and decide at that time.
Okay, one more question. The narrative mentions the use of crushers, stackers and similar equipment for processing the excavated material. I'm wondering if there's any information on how we're going to minimize noise and dust and the impacts that those have on nearby residents?
We're going to work with them to make sure that, that they, they respect that and do what they're supposed to for you.
Will that information be provided at a further public hearing, like when?
We'll have, we'll have conditions, you know, that they'll have to follow.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question, please. Again, Jean Winslow, 28, Heather's Path. My last question, which I apologize for not asking. Does anyone on any board in the town of Carver stand to profit in any way, shape or form from the earth removal?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
That would be unethical.
It would be unethical for them to make money?
It would be unethical for any board member or committee member to profit off of...
Anything like that?
That, that falls under their purview.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Karen Lapcam, Main Street. I appreciate all your time. I appreciate everybody's efforts to try to make something work forward. I don't appreciate when somebody comes to our town and tells us we shouldn't be concerned about an aquifer who uses it. That was just so disrespectful to us. I think that most of you understand the water issue that we have in town. It's a big concern. There are a lot of box turtles down in that area. I've documented them myself through the, the environmental website that we have for the state. That's important. I think there was a lot of them when they did the Route 44 project also. So I hope that we can take the wildlife and any endangered or so endangered species into consideration when they're going forward with their project. And thank you.
My name is Steve Cohen. I live at 20 Heather's Path in Plimpton. I just have a couple of questions. One, I know Kevin, you had said that, you know, you would, you would try to have them adhere to certain standards about when they're doing work and things like that. But what happens when they really don't adhere to it? Because I'm going to just reference the last time the trucks, you know, there was signs put up at the top of Montello. And this is prior to the Green Parkway even being redesigned, that whole area. They weren't supposed to be going down the particular road and yet the trucks were always doing it. And then it got to the point where there was a confrontation where both the police had to show up. And, you know, then the police say, well, well, then it was a, then it was, then it was the responsibility, it became the responsibility of the Plimpton Police Department to, to put a police car and officers on the Plimpton side of Montello Road where they were coming in and off 58. You know, so that's now costing the town of Plimpton money because the construction crews that are working for that company don't adhere to what the policy is. And they, and that, you know, and that goes on for a few days and then they just start doing it again.
All right. Well, I appreciate you bringing up that concern and we'll look into it.
Yeah. Is, is there any type of standing procedures in place when people don't adhere to, you know, can you, you know, is there a penalty? Is there a fine? I know that last, last year when we were all here, I had asked, and he was very, very, this gentleman in the back, the partner, he was great. I, I don't know if you remember, but I was complaining about all the trash being dumped there and about, you know, how about blocking off the roadways that go into there off Montello? And, and they did do that. But now people have just made their own paths, you know? Like right where, like say where those big concrete blocks are, you know, now they just have another roadway here. And you see people going in and out of there all the time.
Well, we're working to develop it. That's why we're here tonight. And bringing up these concerns are going to allow us to condition how this goes forward. And so this is the way to do it. This is the right way to do it.
Right.
For you to bring and everybody to bring their concerns forward to us so we can answer them. We can use our engineers to answer our questions and concerns and your concerns.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And just to clarify, complaints about development and things like that, go to the building commissioner here in Carver.
Okay.
So contact the building commissioner here in Carver.
Hi, Kathy Cohen, 20 Heather's Path in Plimpton. And I want to irritate, whatever, what Jean said. I also walk, my friend Maureen and I walk morning, evening, night, whatever. And we constantly see car seats that are thrown back there and you can see it from the road. I'm not trespassing, but car seats are there. There's mattresses back there, there's tires back there. I, I mean, there was a stack of probably 15 to 20 tires at one point when, when you could see. Right now it's all overgrown, so you can't see. But there are still mattresses there, there's still trash there. And there are people going back there. Every once in a while, the environmental police will come by and you see them go back there. But anybody who walks can see all the trash and you can see the people dumping it. And that's a huge issue, always has been a huge issue. And it doesn't ever get resolved. Yes, they put the barrier up, now they just throw it over the barrier. And if you look at the water along there, that's all contaminated. There was so much trash, there's coolers in there, there's so many things in there that are contaminating our aquifer. We all drink that water. We feed our children using that water or, you know, drink, whatever. And I just think that it needs to be seriously looked at. This has been a problem, not a year, not two years. This has been an ongoing problem for almost 10 years that we have been coming to these meetings. And, and it just seems to go from one to the other and never gets resolved. Thank you.
Is it?
It's free.
Sure.
Okay.
You're getting your steps in tonight.
All I want to say is that I remember...
Me, would you please?
Oh, Rebecca Lipton, Plimpton. I just want to say that I remember when all the boards in Carver permitted what happened over there, where the property is now. And they allowed everybody to bring in the toxic material after Ravenbrook got shut down. They all came over and brought all that toxic material over there. We fought it. The town of Plimpton fought it. We were in meetings here and guess what happened? It has now created a massive PFAS site out there, which no one's really talking about, okay? It's ridiculous. I want to know who's going to follow up with this stuff. You know Middleborough wells are polluted, North Carver can't drink their water. So who holds, you know, the key to fixing these problems? I spoke to the governor. They're waiting for infrastructure money from the feds. Well, good luck. Now we have to deal with it. So I want to know, I think the most important thing, and I'm sorry if I'm upset, but this is a major problem. And, you know, I was on a Zoom conference with Silent Spring Institute and the doctors who did blood studies on the residents of Hyannis and found high levels of PFAS in their bloodstream. And I don't think people around here really know what's going on with this issue. People are getting sick from PFAS. And now we have a PFAS dump out there and they're going to remove all the soil. But I remember, this is why I came up here. I remember when all these boards up here were permitting these things decades ago and our selectmen from Plimpton were in the room and the room was packed with people who didn't want it to happen, but it happened. And then Carver dropped the ball and did not follow up on what was going on back there. And as a result, now we have a major PFAS site there. We have another PFAS site with chemicals leaching out of Ravenbrook, North Carver landfill, and we're the ones who have to deal with it. Try bathing a baby in water with PFAS or making a baby bottle. This is very, very important stuff. And I don't understand why Mr. McLaughlin won't tell us what's going in there or what people are going to be bringing in there. Because I think that's important for our wells and our aquifer. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Is that it at this time for the public? All right then. It's very important for us to take these concerns and to hear these concerns and to work with the developers so that we all can work together and so that all of the needs can be met, all of the concerns can be met. We can't fix what went wrong in the past, but we can take from now and we can move forward. We have this site. It's being developed. They're putting the road in now and now it's our job to see to it that it's done right and that it respects the Butters, respects neighbors. And I know that Mr. McLaughlin, if he was aware that there was so much trash and dumping going on, that maybe there was a way that he could work to see to it that some of it gets removed. I don't know how much of it's your responsibility, but, you know, I'm sure we can all work together to make sure that this site doesn't get polluted, you know?
George? George McLaughlin. We can address that. The PFAS problem has been addressed. You know, one thing I want to bring to the board's attention is we didn't cause the problem, we uncovered the problem. And when we uncovered the problem, we spent a lot of time and a lot of money solving the problem to the DEP's satisfaction. If we hadn't dealt with the problem and left the PFAS in different areas, then that really would have been potentially a problem. None of the wells, all the wells have been tested in the area, none of them have been...
That's not true.
Please?
It's not true. And it doesn't, a membrane is not really the...
Please. You were given an opportunity to speak. I know, but you, you have to respect the fact that you can't just call out and say things.
The DEP and others have looked at the wells in the area. There's no problem with PFAS in the wells. We'll, we'll deal with the issue at the next hearing. I hear you loud and clear, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. But the point, all the point I'm trying to make is if we left the PFAS, you know, in the state it was in, it would pose a lot more, it, it might pose an issue to these folks. It's all been gathered up, it's all been capped and, you know, to the DEP's satisfaction. So we'll...
Is there a place where they can look up the MEPA reports regarding it?
Sure, sure. We can, we can, it would be DEP. But yeah, we can, we can direct them to the DEP reports. We can respond, direct them to the fact that we have ROS status and what have you. We're happy to do that.
I think it would be comforting to them to have that information.
Sure.
And, and so with him sitting here in front of me, if there's a way that we can somehow get your information back and forth to each other so that he can give you the opportunity to, to look up this information and see it for yourself, then I hope that that would help.
Honestly?
I, I just, I just wanted to make that statement.
There are PFAS out there in people's wells. And also we already know the portal where they, we see the levels of PFAS in the water. So they're supposed to...
All right. Again, I'd have to ask you to come up to, I was just letting you know that I would like to see to it that he can get the information to you that you're looking for and that you can see it for yourself.
Okay, well, smarter than I can know. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman, that we can?
No, I have one more question in, in the back.
Kathy Cohen, 20 Heather's Path in Plimpton. And I'm, I'm curious whose well have been tested and is clear because I know as far as I'm concerned, none of us have ever been contacted or asked, would you like your well tested? And our aquifer, our wells are right there. We, not one person in our neighborhood that I know of, so I'm curious who he has, who he has had wells tested. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin, is there a way you can make that information available to them?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get back to the board. We'll get back to the board and make it available.
If you send it to me, we'll put it on the website.
There we go. All right. Thank you for sharing your concerns. And at this time, we are going to need probably to continue this until, I would say, January 14th. I, I would not think that we can take care of all these concerns in, in the next seven days.
I agree.
So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to continue till January 14th.
I'll make said motion.
You get a few specific. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for Route 44 Development LLC requesting an amendment, although it should be a modification, for a previously approved definitive subdivision till January 14th, 2025, 7:00 PM, Room 1 Town Hall, Carver Town Hall.
Second.
And as far as discussion goes, I would like to remind anybody in the audience that it is inappropriate to approach the board at any time. that it is inappropriate to approach the board at any time. And that if there's any materials that need to be disseminated amongst the board, it would be best to give them to Mr. Bott. And it would be better if they were put in prior to the meeting.
That was our further discussion?
That was my further discussion.
Further discussion. Do we have any other further discussion?
I'm good.
All right then, Ms. Gasky.
Aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Owen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
Great. Thank you all for your time and feedback tonight.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we're going to be here for a little bit to talk about zoning. So I don't know if you guys want to take a break. It's 9:15. Just stand up and flex for a second or two. Can you call us back into session?
Yes.
All right. So very well. Thank you, folks, and sorry to start this at 9:21 PM, but we had a swell meeting earlier. So you have three memos from me regarding zoning bylaw changes. The MBTA zoning bylaw, the accessory housing development, and the redevelopment bylaw that I previously suggested. So I'd like to kind of start with the MBTA community bylaws because I think it's the one that's probably going to have the most amount of discussion. So I've written this memo a couple of times over the last week or so. So I'm just going to kind of read into it and then we're going to get, look at some maps. That's why the big screen's up behind you. So Carver, as I've said before, is one of 175 communities. They're required under general law, 48 Section 3 referred to as the MBTA zoning bylaw, to create zoning for multifamily housing. Carver's one of 35 adjacent transit small towns and is required to create zoning for 235 multifamily units suitable for families with children by December 2015. As I said, those 235 units.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Thank you. Did I say 15? Matt, that's why I'm a planner, not an engineer, if you don't do math. Twenty-fif, 2025, thank you. So those 235 units can't be restricted, age restricted, and only a maximum of 20% can be affordable. But because we have an inclusionary housing bylaw, we're allowed to make part of those units affordable under the housing, under the law. Carver needs to create zoning that'll allow those 235 units at a density of 15 units per acre. The town isn't required to build housing or build infrastructure. That would likely include a public water supply and a wastewater treatment plant. Those things will be required by a developer, like any other development. Carver's role is creating zoning that doesn't prohibit the type of development in the areas the town has identified for such. The master plan adopted in 2017 citing the importance to many people who participated in creating the plan of protecting Carver's small-town rural character by encouraging growth in preferred locations. The town's existing business development, excuse me, the town's existing village business and village districts were identified as key areas where compact traditional New England development has occurred in the past and where the town might like to see it take place in the future. The master plan calls for modest mixed use and multifamily units in village areas represented by those V and VB zoning districts, which I think there are four. And I think most people in Carver would not consider 15 dwelling units per acre as called for in the MBTA zoning bylaw as modest. However, this is the law that we're now required to comply with. So there's four areas where one can find village and business zoning. It's not necessary to rezone these areas, but add an overlay district, which allows the property owners the option to use either the existing zoning in the zoning bylaw or opt for the MBTA zoning at a residential scale of 15 units per acre. So the first question before the board is which of these areas, previously identified in the 2017 master plan, are the preference for the board in order to comply with the general bylaw and create zoning for 235 units of age restrictions? And it's some rudimentary calculations that we'll get into a little bit. It showed where four areas essentially in the town center area could be conceivably host 239 units of housing. This is on a very rudimentary scale, looking at our GIS, which isn't particularly effective for analysis. So we will likely have to hire someone in looking at those zoning areas, do they comply with the requirements of the law? Because the state is concerned about folks gaming the system and saying, yeah, here's a place you can build 235 units. It's in the great swamp. So they want to know that the areas that are being proposed for zoning are upland areas and don't have restrictions on them, they're going to prohibit folks from being able to develop the site. So what I did here is I took our zoning bylaw and I zoomed in to the areas that are village, village business, village. In village, in village business districts areas. So the first is here, is North Carver, Main Street, Plymouth Street. This is village business. This is village district. The second is here in the town center. General business, general business, village.
I'm sorry, could we just turn that a little bit, Mr. Bott?
I knew, I knew it was on wheels for a reason. Thank you, Colin.
That's perfect.
All right, so North Carver.
All right, hold on. So what are we looking at in red, gold, and purple?
So what the zoning bylaw, what the master plan said is look at developing these places in village areas, and they identified them as village business and village zoning districts. So this is highway commercial to the north and this is general business to the south. So this is Main Street, this is North Carver.
So in this area, where are we looking to propose, propose the MBTA law to be? As the entirety of the.
Well, I'm going to go through four of them. We'll kind of come back to that, okay? So area number one, North Carver. Area number two in the town center. This is the village zoning district. These are general business to the north and south. We also have Wenham Street near Wenham Pond. This is village district zoning. And the fourth is South Carver, here on Lakeview, where council aging is Sampson Pond. So under the guise of what was said in the 2017 master plan, where we want to see these things at, my first question to the board is, are there areas that we want? And I'm not saying that anybody from the feedback I've been getting wants this, but where is the preferred location for this in Carver? In my mind, I thought it was pretty safe to eliminate things like Sampson Pond and South Carver because of the character or the neighborhood and the roads. And essentially, there's not a whole lot of property there in order to, for redevelopment. And we talked about preserving the rural character of Carver. Well, this is a nice quaint little village that you go through. So I don't know if the board wants to say, yeah, we should put 15 units of housing here or in this location on Wenham Pond. So what I'd like to have the board tell me is like, you're correct. We don't want to see the MBTA zoning in these two areas.
I don't really have a problem with Wenham Street. It's a village business and it can incorporate potential, but I would really like to see it near the highways or major traffic areas, by 44 or 495 are my preference.
Board members?
I don't want to see it, period.
That's why, that's why I said, but we want.
Right.
But that's why we're here.
There is no preference.
No.
We have to, we have to put it somewhere.
Is that we don't?
No, I understand that.
We can fight it.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I would like to do.
So, so let me talk about the fighting part because it's in the email, I think, at some point. So the town of Milton passed the zoning and then the town of Milton had a referendum to vote and overturn the zoning. And so they opted to overturn the zoning. So they have set aside, and I've confirmed this, $275,000 for special town council to take this to court with the Attorney General and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I myself do not believe that it is a good use of municipal funds to spend a quarter million dollars or even a hundred K or so with town council. My preference would be to comply with the law and create the zoning. As I've talked about before and I talk about in the memo, when we looked at the housing production plan in 2017, they identified where we might see 95 units of housing. Because part of a housing production plan is you have to have a housing plan in place and you have to have production of housing in order to get to this safe harbor where you can turn down a 40B. Well, Carver hasn't had a 40B for decades. While I was in Falmouth, we had about four or five going on at a time when money was cheap and demand was hot. And I believe the reason we haven't seen that in Carver is because in order to do a housing development like that, where the affordable units, the market rate units have to underwrite the cost of the affordable units. Because when you look at sticks and bricks to build a house, essentially the developer has break-even-ish on those affordable units. So they have to get enough money on the market rate units to underwrite the cost of the affordables. They can get that market rate unit in Carver, I mean, in Falmouth, but I don't believe they can get it in Carver, which is why I don't think we've seen that. And when all the zoning is created, assuming the towns comply, there'll be 175 communities that have multifamily housing. By right, the developer could come and talk to a landowner and say, I'd like to buy your land and I'd like to build stuff here. In an area where we're 50% wetlands with no infrastructure, no water, no sewer, and no top end of the marketplace, do we really think that Carver's going to be in the top five? Are developers going to show up in these 175? Or as I've said publicly before, or do we think we're one above Plimpton? Now, Plimpton actually just got a 40B application, so it might be one behind Plimpton. But I think the market dynamics are going to be that there's a lot of places for developers to build this stuff. Will they get to Carver? Yeah, likely some one of these days. But are they going to be beaten a path to our door? Unlikely based on just the economics of building housing, of building these things and the things they have to put into place, where there's not transit, there's not sewer, there's not water. All those things carrying costs typically are going to make these things unfinancable for some developer, unless the developer already owns the property and owns a bank. So while we have to comply with the law, I don't think we're going to see immediate implications of this in the town of Carver. But we still have to comply with the law and put things where they're supposed to be. Now, it's still up to town meeting. Now, what the planning board's responsibility is, is to, is to put it on the warrant. It's town meeting's job to vote for it. Because it's housing, it's a 50% plus one vote. We go to town meeting and town meeting shoots it down, well, we've done our job. And the state will do their job and impose whatever sort of sanctions on us they want. Right now, under the guidelines for 3A, there are 13 grants that the town won't be eligible for if they don't comply with the zoning by December 2025. One of those is a grant we just got for doing an economic development plan. That same grant was one that North Carver was pursuing for evaluating the plan. So another one is municipal vulnerabilities grant, which I think our emergency management service is used to do vulnerability planning. So those are the states. Whatever sort of implications it has for court cases and things like that, I don't know and can't predict. But the state has said with no uncertainty, and the Attorney General, I think I quoted her in my memo, that, you know, we will use the tools we have to have, bring the towns into compliance. So that's where we're at. We have a law, we have a deadline, and there are implications if we don't get to them.
Mr. Planner, at what point did Milton decide to fight this? At this level?
No, Milton passed the bylaw.
They did?
Yep. They went to town meeting and they passed the bylaw. Amongst those people who were on the planning board at the time was a local attorney, who's a statewide attorney, she does work all over the place, Kathleen O'Donnell, she's the attorney for, for the RDA, somebody I've known for years and years. And we've talked about it a few times. And when this was passed by town meeting, they did the appeal, they did the referendum, weeks, months later, I don't know what the time is. And interestingly, in the next election cycle, when Kathleen O'Donnell ran for reelection, she was voted out of office and says, oh, you're one of those people who wanted this thing. So, you know, these are real world implications, so.
No, I'm only asking because I'm, I'm just curious because you say they allotted $275,000 to fight this.
Yes. After, after the referendum.
Right.
And after they, the zoning was reversed.
But I think it would ultimately cost the town a lot more than $275,000 if this was put into place.
School would have to get larger.
So I'm just trying to weigh it out.
Yeah. So 235 units of housing for all sorts of folks. And I think the average household size these days is like two point something per, per person. I'll have to look up at that number. But, but there are always implications for development. Not every development pays its cost. Mostly housing does not. And the biggest losers for things like that tend to be larger subdivisions with, you know, bigger homes and things like that. So our role is to create the zoning. So my first question to the board is because part of this analysis that we're going to have to work with Mass Housing or something is to analyze the area we've looked at for the zoning. As in, does this make, does this meet their compliance model to say, if we're zoning in these areas with those particular parcels, is there the carrying capacity in that area with wetlands and streams and things like that to certify that yes, if the zoning passes in these areas, there is the area there to build them? So we get back to, there are four areas, as is pointed out, in the master plan. So do we like to put them in North Carver? In Central Carver? In Wenham?
Are they required to be in village business districts?
They are not. So, but, but the reason, the reason I leaned into this is because this was the discussion in the master plan in 2017. And the reason we do master planning is for the same reason that they don't build airplanes while they're flying them. You don't want to be figuring things out in the heat of things go. You want to take a sort of a study look at that. So I'm relying on the work of those folks who went to the committee meetings and things like that in 2017. They could be anywhere you want. But I'm just following the guidance that we've received previously through the town, through the master plan, by identifying these four areas.
Do you think the town can afford to lose that much commercial area to, and the trade-off for tax-negative residential developments?
Well, I have not done a financial analysis on this. Nor do I know that, that I'm capable of. I'm sure we could hire somebody to do that. But when we look at the town center, and one of the things in my analysis, so I looked at all the parcels in the town center and all the parcels in, in North Carver. I did some additional analysis here because one of my thoughts is the town would prefer to see areas redeveloped as opposed to developing on greenfield sites. Let's not go onto a site and cut down 40 acres of whatever. Let's look at the potential for reusing properties that have already been developed. And those four that are in my, in my analysis, I think there's five, are 90 Main Street, that's the EMT school, Carver Square, the Catholic Church property, the old Carver Police Department.
Can we please stop using the Catholic Church? That is our only Catholic church in this town. And you keep throwing it out there and it's very offensive to every parishioner that lives in this town. It's not right.
Well, let me say this, and I anticipated this because I heard from a few people who called about this. I am doing an analysis based on land use. I don't know specifically the quote in the Bible, but I think it's Mark 22:15. It says, "Render under Caesar what is Caesar's." Land use in real estate is the realm of Caesar. I'm not here to talk about politics. And the only reason I mention this is because the same quote was used in a Supreme Court case of Hennepin versus the United States of America. So I am identifying underutilized parcels. I'm not picking out any particular group.
How do you, how do you say that that's underutilized when it's a functioning church? I don't understand that.
What I've said before is we're looking at areas that have got a sea of parking and not a lot of cars in them. So when the church is in place, I'm sure there's people at the church.
There's many people.
But from the highest and best use of land use, having a use like that that used to be a grocery store, that now is parked for a grocery store, these are the areas identified, those five parcels that are in the town center, that are on the main drag, that minimize the amount of redevelopment for the property. So these are the, these are the parcels I've used for this demonstration. I'm not trying to offend anybody in the church. I'm talking about the technical merits of what we're doing. And from my perspective, the highest and best use of that property in the town center is likely not being met by the current use.
I would respectfully disagree.
That's fine.
I would say also with practicing Catholic, although I do not attend Mass in this town. I attend someplace. I attend someplace else for personal reasons, that from a purely perspective discussion, I don't have any problem with this. I'd love to see the Archdiocese of Boston, which is the corporation, the sole corporation, the person, the Archbishop, what do we have one? We do have one now, make a decision to say, "Yeah, it was a foolish thing to acquire this property in the first place. Let's sell it for development, and let's build something nice someplace else." So that's the way forward without this infringement of Catholics. I don't think the church is going to go away. My point simply is that I would just say, "Let's look at it and look at it that way." I'm more concerned about highest and best use because that tells toward the idea of, which is not the intention of eminent domain, but that, again, with another case in Connecticut, but that was basically a case of highest and best use. The town, the city said, basically, "We can get more tax revenue from this property if we can take it."
Well, that was the Kelo case, and no one's suggesting anyone's going to take anything by eminent domain. This is a business transaction for anybody who's going to develop.
Again, we're on the same side. I just want to, you know, express my concern. You know, eminent domain was mentioned an awful lot in the last several years. It was mentioned in conjunction with the urban renewal program. We do not live in an urban town, we live in a rural town. Why in anybody's book we have an urban renewal plan is beyond me. And maybe that's one of the things I will learn in my time on the planning board here. So I'm agreeing with you. I think that we're going to discuss these things. We can't draw lines around them, that whole area. I think if we put the better use. And I think if it was able to be done in such a way to have Sacred Hot, I mean, I'm sorry, what's the name of the parish?
Old Lady of Orange.
I'm sorry. I do not, I'm, it's an offense. I do think that it would be better to have a better church someplace else.
Well, so I'm not talking about a church, I'm talking about zoning.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
I'm talking about land use. And I'm not here to offend anybody, I'm speaking of the facts based on how I understand them in my profession. That these five parcels represent an opportunity to maximize the amount of development in one compact area so it's not spread about the town in parcels that are going to have the least amount of disruption to the natural environment. That's why I did this analysis, looked at these parcels. Interestingly enough, the first 525 feet of the Sportsman Club, which is sort of semi-wooded, is zoned village business, zoned a few years ago. So what I looked at are what are those parcels that are on the main drag and don't require large-scale deforestation of a site if somebody decides to opt for it? And keep in mind, our job is just to create the zoning. Nobody's building anything, nobody's requiring anybody to do anything other than pass the zoning. So I heard you, but I'm talking about real estate, I'm talking about asphalt, I'm talking about zoning, I'm talking about housing.
So what do the red and the gold mean?
So this is the village district, and these are general business. Now, the properties that we're looking at, some are in the general business, general business, and some are in the zoning. So our role is to look at, we think these are the sites that we can house that in. So we'll take those parcels and I'll have someone do that analysis to say, "Yeah, from those areas that you're looking at," whether they be all four of them, or whether they be one of them or two of them, we have to know that that is going to comply with the state's requirements for the areas that we're going to zone, even as we're talking about what that zoning might look like. So I'm going to go back to question one. Is it the preference of the board to have them in all four places or to have them in less than four places? And I'm not talking about a specific parcel, I'm talking about specific areas of the town.
It can be broken up into several different zones.
Correct.
Why wouldn't the already Meadowbrook Way, and why wouldn't we include on Wareham Street, I'm just using this as a general example, where there's already mobile manufactured homes at a higher density? I mean, why wouldn't we even just run it up South Meadow Road where the high density is along the sides of the road up there?
Well, I think the board can do whatever they'd like. Once again, my analysis, my discussion is based upon the discussions of the master plan to preserve the rural character of Carver. Where would people like to see these things? And they said, "In these village areas, in village business." So I'm just tacking on to work previously done by the town as to where we might want to see those things.
This extensive 15 units per acre was never envisioned at that time, nor could it be, because at that time, the state left it up to the local zoning to decide the zone and not, they didn't put any requirements on it. So what properties in this area would make up what you're considering and how much of it? I mean, how many acres is it going to cover and...
So attached to your memorandum is this very exciting spreadsheet that identifies every parcel, what its acreage is, what it's zoned, and essentially who the property owner is, to look at those sort of things. And in that first page, if you look at the back, where it has potential MBTA sites, those are my five parcels that I previously identified. The Sportsman Club at 8.35 acres could gen...
In its entirety, or is that the first 500 feet?
The first 525 feet.
Okay.
Okay, that's scaled out about eight acres or so. So eight acres times 15 units per acre, 67 units. The EMT school, in fact, let's go, let's see how this thing works. So that's all the Carver, this is the Kingston GIS, so if people want to play with this at home, they certainly may. So that is the Sportsman's Club, and that first 525, he kind of cuts an angle across like that. So that, and these are rudimentary numbers, I basically, back-of-the-envelope calculation is what they call it. So that might be 67 units of housing there. The EMT school... I think that's it. The EMT school, 61 potential acres.
That's 61 acres?
No, 61 potential units, I'm sorry. That's 5.69 acres. And I scaled that off of this, basically all the wetlands areas here that are, you know, magnitude of scale, you could develop most of that site. Once again, these are very rudimentary numbers. So EMT school, Carver Square, 52 potential acres on 3.47 acres. This property owned by the Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Massachusetts. It has five acres shown there, but when you scale it off, there's probably effectively about three and change there. So it's likely 51 acres of potential there. And then lastly, the police and fire station next door, if that was included in the zoning in this area here, that has the capacity to maybe have eight units.
I think it'd be very short-sighted to include that when the town at some point in time is certainly going to be looking to develop that as some sort of community, community building of some sort.
Yeah, well, the town owns it.
How big is Pine Tree Village?
I don't know.
It's already in, it already utilizes high-density housing in there.
I don't know how much extra land there is there, Connie, though.
Right, that's why I was asking.
Well, and keep in mind, there doesn't have to be extra land. If someone says to the, and I know, and I've been through, I have a very good experience with mobile home parks in Kingston, there were two, and when the owners wanted to sell them, the first thing that the people who were in the park wanted to do was buy it themselves. And it took some court action and things like that for them to own it themselves as a co-op. So anybody, you can zone anything you want.
So you're thinking theoretically if the current owner wanted to sell it?
Yeah. So if there's something on the ground...
There's a lot of owners in Pine Tree, right? It's not...
I don't know. It used to be one, and then they sold out.
Okay, I wasn't sure, I didn't know how that...
The Piper family owned it, but I don't know who owns it now.
And isn't there another?
Cranberry.
Cranberry's up at South, Cranberry Road.
Cranberry Village is a co-op.
Five and older, right?
That's a restricted community.
Yes, I wouldn't want to touch that. But there's also two other camps down there, there's the old Christian camp and...
Well, that's, I was wondering how much, because that's not...
Across the street from the Christian camp.
It's my family's campground, yeah.
That's a what?
It's my family's campground.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Well, and, so, and once again, I'm looking at protecting the rural areas by putting things where there's already stuff, where there's already traffic, there's already this, we're not going to diminish the quality of life of people with something that might be zoned here on Main Street as it might be on, you know, the end of Wareham Road. So once again, the discussions I'm having are informed by what was in the master plan.
And I would be willing to, I would say concede some land in the center of town, but it needs to be spread out. Let's just say you put all that in the center of town, and there's going to be an increased demand for commercial space and commercial real estate, and that's not going to be available any longer.
Zoning doesn't build stuff. It's an overlay district, so there's two options. When you have an overlay district, people can use the underlying zoning for general business, village or business building, or they can opt to do the overlay. We're not changing the zoning, we're not forcing anybody to make a decision about what the zoning is going to be, we're not taking anything away from them. We're adding a layer, the overlay district, that someone has to make happen with money that they will likely have to invest in things that are available other places rather than Carver.
And what sort of control would the town have over these developments in regards to, let's just say, appearance and fitting in with the rural character of the town?
So it would be site plan review, it's not a special permit. And amongst those things that we have talked about before in my memo are some of the things we have talked about when we're looking at potentially buying Lakeview and Main Street under a 61A piece of property. These, I don't have an image on the screen for you, but... These things that are in your memorandum, this is from a missing middle study that basically says, "These are the type of housing that you may or may not recognize." In addition to the graphic, there's also pictures in there that show what those houses are. So this is a walk-up, it is a small-scale multifamily building, which is commonly inclusive of a series of flats. It's two to three stories, eight to 12 units per building, five to 25 dwelling units per You're allowed, under the zoning, to create less density on the street front. So this is what some of those properties might look like, old captain's houses and things like that.
Kind of my concern is going to be that it's going to look like the low-income housing that, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the cross from the old Job Lot down there on Plymouth Street in Plymouth, what they put up there, they tore down the old farm and put that up there.
Yep.
And pretty much, as soon as you drive past certain areas, you can say that's just clearly a development for, you know, I don't know, they just, there was no thought to it, it's all the same building.
Yep.
It's all the same color. There's no amenities.
So here's the deal with 3A is you can't juice up your zoning to make it more harder for this. So if you don't have design...
We didn't want that.
Yeah. If you don't have design standards right now, then you can't say, "Oh, yeah, we're going to do this zoning, and we're going to create these explicit design standards."
I'm not looking to do that, but I'm not looking for cookie-cutter houses either.
So in the development scenarios, you can typically put lower-density housing on the front, the fronts on the property, and larger buildings to the back, it screens from the front to the back. So that's what you would typically see in some type of development like that. But you've got to create the areas to zone. And that zoning is going to be at 15 units. And you get to say, "We want less density here because it's on the roadway that people can see, and we want more density in the back." So as you look at the zoning, we can say, you know, the first 100-foot of the zoning district has to be X-density, and then the property at the back has to be larger than that, you have to net 15 acres. So if you say, and I'm just making up numbers here, if you've got five dwelling units per acre on the street, then you're going to have to have 25 dwelling units per acre behind the streets. So you can have a sub-district within that. But that's...
I'm concerned about the army barracks look, and I know you've put several examples in here, and sure, the captain's house is beautiful, and I think we could all accept that as going in, but, you know, how about five of these, you know, more of an army barracks-style fitted in, it's square, it's got a slanted roof, and we're going to put as many on as we can. I mean, what level of control does the town have to make sure that it's not going to look like something out of the row houses or Bowery Row from the early 1900s or what went on in the 60s? You know, community housing that just ends up looking exactly like what it is.
So I was not in the army, my father and my brother were, so I didn't go to army housing because it was a great thing. The zoning is the zoning, you have to create the zoning. If you don't have design controls right now, you don't get to imply design controls with them.
We should have design controls, and I'm asking you what they are. What level of design controls do we have that somebody can't come in and just put in five of the exact same 5,000-square-foot buildings that are going to hold, well, what was that, 67 in the case of the Sportsman's Club? So they put in 11-unit Bennett buildings, and they put in five of them right next to each other, and it looks...
As I said before, if you don't have design controls right now...
Well, what are our design controls?
The building has to be, has the front on the street, it has to be made of this material, it has to do this kind of look, and it has to have this kind of roofline. Those are things, if you don't have them in your zoning right now, you can't just...
Are they in our zoning?
No.
We don't have any control over the rural character of the town?
Through zoning, by putting things in the areas that are zoned for that.
Well, I think that should be complementary to this passage of this bylaw. So we're not going to put in five shoeboxes to just fit in as many people as we want with the, it should be...
Well, if we vote on that first and then vote on the zoning bylaws, then it's a win-win. Vote on the standards and then vote on it, then they existed before the zoning existed.
Now, you got one town meeting.
Like I said, you voted on it first.
So my point is, is that you are obliged by the law to create the zoning. Where do you want it to be at? And then we'll keep developing that after we have that analysis of these areas actually come, because if you just say, "Yeah, we just want to put it here," and they do the analysis and say, "You can't get 235 units of housing in there, you're going to have to create other areas." So my idea is to bring a couple different areas and say, "These are the areas the planning boards identified as where they would prefer to see the zoning more than any other place." Not that they'd prefer to see the zoning, but does that area comply with the statute?
How many, the old Robies that's closed down in North Carver there?
I didn't do any analysis of per unit, per lot up there.
I think it's right off the exit, so it's one of the...
That thing there with all the wetlands, then?
No, I think it's, it's right there. This whole area right here, and we probably include that. I mean, there's a lot of acres there, I think they just closed Robies down, if I'm not mistaken, I think the gentleman retired and...
It got bought out.
He got bought out.
Yeah, they sold the company.
But, you know, I'm saying that I see on this page here, your name is listed.
Sure, yeah, go ahead, tear down my 200-year-old house.
It's not very big, though, you know, it's less than an acre, but, you know, I couldn't have but notice.
As you notice, it's not about who, it's about where.
Because if we can get five or six acres up at the interchange there, and then maybe the Sportsman's Club and another five acres in South Carver towards the interchange, you know, you spread it out, you don't pack it all together, and then you reach your 15.2-acre requirement, is that what it is?
15 dwelling units per acre for a total of 235 housing units, people to be built in Carver.
15.2 acres. I wouldn't want to put them all in the center of Carver, and a lot of that is due to the... to the traffic, the emergency route, and the loss of commercial potential. But if you spread it out over enough areas, it could be viable. I'm not a big fan of the state coming in telling us to do it, but I don't believe that Carver has the wherewithal or resources to fight it. And that's, that means I think we should put forth the best plan that we can.
I couldn't have said that better myself.
Right, because like Pine Tree Village, it's on Wareham Street, one ends Tremont Street, the other end ends up by 195 over there by the Walmart or something? Not a big fan. It has, it already has a lot of property on it, a lot of development on it. It's already been cleared. Robies has already been cleared.
Which one are you referring to being cleared on Wareham Street? The village? Pine Tree Village? No, I'm just trying to.
I'm just using it as an example that.
No, no, but it's, but it's not cleared.
No, no, it doesn't.
You just mean using that site.
Right, they don't want us to say, take 15 acres of woodland and cut down all the, because that kind of.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah, okay.
That kind of trades off against what they're trying to do, but, and that's kind of what I'm leaning towards is I'd like to see it near the highway interchange.
No, I understand.
Connie, if you would, step up and just.
If you zone it, they will.
Steve Karnacki, whoever that guy is, and zoom around to where you're thinking at. Put your finger on the screen.
Yeah, sure, with Wareham.
There's the outline of Carver.
I'm just going to use this as an example because it's already high-density and?
Don't pick my house, please.
No, no, I don't know, is this it here? Maybe I'm having trouble with.
If the weather girls can do it, Connie, why can't you?
They have a stick. But that's already, that's already high-density. I'm not even sure if I'm looking at it there. I don't, I don't think that's quite right. Again, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but.
Tom, can't you call up the assesses map? No?
Well, this is the GIS, if you.
I know, but it'd be easier for him to, for us to see on the assesses map the outline of the area.
Well, there are, I think, 46 different assesses maps, so it's a lot easier. Find.
Oh, I was going to give you the map number.
All right, we can do that, we'll take that number.
It was 126. I don't know if it changed.
One, two, six. 126, who? Well, let's just get down in the neighborhood.
I think it, I think it may have changed.
Yeah, let's pick one of those. Congratulations. Well, we're not in your neighborhood, we're just trying to find it.
It's about, Miles Standis Drive, I think is a little north.
That's off of Cranberry Road.
Is that behind Piper's?
Will that continue through, Tom?
What is that?
I said, will that go, like?
Cranberry Road is much parallel to Wareham, doesn't it?
And maybe I should be coming up.
There's Wareham Street right there.
So, we're at the beginning.